Okay, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the June 7th, 2017 City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order the June 7th meeting. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Maloney, roll call.
Faria, Johnson Santos, Lewis, Silveira, Walto.
Here, we do have a quorum. Item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Faria.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis.
Second.
Motion by Faria, second by Lewis, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item five, presentation, proclamation recognizing the grand opening of the Las Vanos Save Mart store, number 631. And Robbie, could you come on up? We have Robbie Galicchio here with us tonight. Robbie is a long, 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 long-time employee of Save Mart, and I'm happy that he's here tonight. Thank you so much for coming. Proclamation recognizing the grand opening of Las Vanos Save Mart store 631. The store number didn't change, did it?
Yes, it did.
Oh, did?
Yeah, it used to be 101, now it's 631.
Oh, okay. All right. As Mr. Faria put, more information that everyone wants to hear. Whereas, on May 22nd, 2017, the Las Vanos Save Mart store 631 opened its doors to the public in the newly-located 52,000-square-foot building, offering a wider variety of products and services. Whereas, the Las Vanos store is one of seven out of dozens of stores in California that have been updated with the company's new look and features. The new location brings new services, including a burrito taco and nacho bar, fresh salsa and guacamole, juice bar, fresh juice and smoothies, specialty sandwiches, a soup and salad bar, and an in-store grill, a floral selection, a pharmacy, and much more. And whereas, the opening of this new and expanded store has created over 30 new jobs in Las Vanos, and whereas, Save Mart has served the Las Vanos community since 1986, and is excited to bring a wider selection of products and services while continuing to provide great customer service. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council member of the city of Las Vanos do hereby congratulate the Las Vanos Save Mart store 631 on its grand opening of their new store. Rob?
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Appreciate it very much. Thanks so much.
Recently, our city manager and Stacy and I were in Las Vegas at the ICSC Recon Show, and it is where all the products that are sold in the marketplace and people who are representing developers, it was so big that you probably wear out a pair of shoes in three days walking the number of halls that they have. And we met the owner and the developer of the new Save Mart. His name is Ray Bayet, really nice guy, and he took a chance and invested in this new facility. We're hoping that it pays off big for him, and now he's looking to develop more in Las Vanos. So it was a very, very profitable trip for the city of Las Vanos, and we're looking for more retailers to locate here, but we had to reach out to them. And it's a two-way street. The way this works is developers have property on the east and west side of town, and what they do is they're looking for businesses, so they, every store under the sun, you name it, is represented there. Every chain store, every chain restaurant, you name it, even the independents are there, and they're all looking to locate in different towns. But they don't just locate in a different town, you have to sell your community. And these two individuals that were with me on this trip did an excellent job of selling Las Vanos, because the developers and also the retailers that are looking to come here did not know about certain aspects of Las Vanos, and now they do, with good planning. So thank you again to Ray Bayet. He saw the vision of coming here to Las Vanos and expanding the store of already-successful Save Mart store, so we thank him, and now we're looking forward to more partnerships with other people who own land in Las Vanos and are looking to locate here with their facilities. And I will tell you that what these individuals are saying, and Stacy now that you can tell them too, they're not looking to cannibalize, they're looking to expand the services in Las Vanos. They're not looking to run over the top of each other. So when businesses come here, the new thought is not to cannibalize another business, but to bring a business here where the services aren't here already, and then capitalize on that service so people have more choices in the city of Las Vanos. And so that's what we're working on, and they've done an excellent job promoting Las Vanos. Thank you. Item number six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. If you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Okay. No, 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 you don't need to sign in. If you'd like to come up, if there's anyone who'd like to speak at the public forum, please come forward now. One at a time.
Thank you, council members. My name is Megan Macy. I'm an attorney for Las Vanos Unified School District. I'm speaking on the Sunset Hills development, which I understand there was a public hearing on April 19th, and there was a letter that was submitted, so this is not intended to be an addition to the public hearing, I understand that that's closed, but wanted to provide some more general comments about the development and kind of the relationship between the city and the school district with multiple developments that are kind of coming down the pike. And, you know, just a note on the letter that was submitted on 4/19, it does address some of the SEQA issues and concerns that the school district had, but I don't want to spend time reiterating those now. I do want to note that, you know, the city and the school district historically have had a very nice relationship when it's come to development and making sure that the students of the school district can be appropriately housed. Obviously, there's been a tremendous amount of growth in the area, a lot of student generation, and that's required a lot of facilities to be built in the school district, which are at capacity at this point in time. Want to compliment staff who's been extremely cooperative with the district's team in terms of communicating with us as development has come down the pike. With the Sunset Hills development, however, there was, I would say, a little bit of a lapse in terms of the communication and the lack of the developer actually reaching out at all to the school district to deal with mitigation issues. Realize this is a very, you know, relatively small development, but it is critical from the school district's perspective that all developers and development is treated equally in order to make sure that facilities can be available to the students that are generated. Also, you know, I've seen an opinion from your city attorney that the city is really limited to mitigation, you know, to mitigation under SB 50, which allows for a statutory fee for schools, and I just want to be clear that really the viewpoint of the school district is that's not a limitation. There are plenty of options available for the city to support the school district in terms of making sure that development is paying its way and helping build schools so that there can be appropriate student housing. And just to point out a few of those and to be thinking about as these relationships move forward, there are ordinances that you can consider adopting that would allow for the phasing in of development so the district can keep up in terms of its own development of schools, so kids can be housed. There is a requirement actually under SEQA that interim housing concerns, traffic, and other environmental impacts that are related to schools must be mitigated, separate and aside from the actual housing issue, the permanent housing issue. And I guess we would, you know, we would just ask that the city council, you know, consider and really support, continue to support the district in the way that it has for the past 20 years in making sure that, you know, adequate housing can be completed. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Also know that there's a couple board members here who are interested in addressing the issues. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Dennis Arias, resident here in Las Vanos, also been on the school board for 19 years. I'd like to address the Sunset Hills development. I'd like to hear from that developer. Why doesn't he want to support our schools? If he's here tonight, I'd really like him to make a statement saying why he doesn't want to support our schools. Council, what's best for our community? Your job is to do what's best for our community. And I've said it before, standing up here, as a school board member, we're nothing more than a puppet on a string to our city council. We did the study, we spent the time, we did everything we needed to do to justify the numbers, and what we need to keep pace in our community with the houses that are coming in for our children in the district, we have that number. We have 12 or 14 developers that are paying that number, and now we have one coming in that says it will kill his project if he has to pay that number. But yet, since 2009, houses have more than doubled, they're back to the 2,000 rates, and construction's only gone up 10 or 15 percent. So this developer, if we do not hold his feet to the fire or come up with another avenue, he will walk away with over $120,000 in his pocket that we will then be short for our school district. The land is being rezoned from professional office to medium-density 11 homes. Planning Commission says he followed the process, so you can vote, you can vote to rezon. You don't have to. But in doing so, your community will suffer. At this point in time, it's not in our city's best interest. We do not need 11 more homes, we need another grammar school. We're doubling the size of Mercy Springs Elementary to get us through this next year. Based on our enrollment and projected enrollment, we will need another grammar school in 2018-19 school year. We also need to relocate San Luis High School because we've overgrown it. It's ready to bust at the seams. We also need the science wing at Pacheco High School so we can house 400 more students because Pacheco High School right now, today, is full. Students coming into our community get sent to Las Vanos High School because Pacheco is full. We need locker rooms at Lofton Stadium that have not had locker rooms since the swimming pool was closed. Now let's remember, this past year in November, we passed a state bond. Let's also remember that our Governor Brown did not support that bond, and now he's holding us all hostage. They owe us over $16 million without the second expansion to Mercy Springs Elementary. They haven't paid us a dime. And he's talking about waiting five to possibly 10 years with that $9 billion and changing the way that they put the money out to the school districts, which means if he changes the program that we are currently in, that could put us off even farther. That's how important this kind of a decision is for you tonight. We have 14 other developers that are willing to pay our fee that are building in our community. We average 230 children new every year in our school district for the last five years when there was no building going on. So how many more students are we going to get now that we're starting to build homes again at a very rapid pace here in our community? Very important we get the money we need so that we can keep these schools built for Let's deal with developers to keep our community whole. Let's make decisions that'll move us forward. I'm on the two-by-three. The object of the two-by-three is to let the city council know what the school district needs, but we're puppets on a string. We can tell you our needs, we can justify our needs, but you hold the ultimate decision. So at this point in time, for our school district, I'm asking you and even begging you to just, instead of rezoning this property, make a statement that in this point in time, it's not the best interest for our community to build these 11 homes. Don't make no other statement. Just let our community know that you support your schools like we all know and hope you do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Eric Lamone, resident of Las Vanos, employee for Public Services. As a resident, I would like to thank you for upping the water days. My grass is breathing a sigh of relief, I know it's, we're water-conscious here, but it looks better these days. Now on to business. I wanted to remind our folks, our residents here in Las Vanos, to make sure they're recycling correctly, just to let people know that I frequent the streets weekly. I go through carts, and I look through them, and I'm still finding items that are not acceptable. Example of items not acceptable are clothing, food items, styrofoam. If people have questions or concerns about how the recycling program works, please don't hesitate to call me, 826-0231. I'd be more than happy to go to your place of residence and give you a presentation and how to do it. I know it's, you're looking at recycling, go, wow, this guy's up here talking recycling, but it's my job, and I want to make Las Vanos residual something good and something to talk about in the future, so I appreciate your time. And one more item, I just want to thank Chief Breezy, we've been having some issues with trucks frequenting behind Walmart, Watercrest Court. It's been really hard to access the carts in that neighborhood, and I just want to ask the public to please be mindful of our trucks coming through the neighborhoods to pick up. There's, I'll give you an example, last Thursday, the truck wasn't able to access it, he had to come at a later time and date because it was inaccessible, but Gary took the initiative and dispatched, I don't know, a couple officers or so, and it did mitigate that situation a little bit. Ongoing, I'm hoping it gets better, and I will continue to talk to residents and remind them to be mindful of this. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Yes, good evening, mayor, council members. So I'm up here as a coach, board member, as well as a father of two girls who play soccer. And here in Las Vanos, we're in agriculture land, and one of the things that we expect to see is everything green, right? Especially when we have people visit over, they come over and they expect to see green as well. And one of the areas that we find ourselves constantly talking to other teams, the parents from other teams coming over to Las Vanos is field conditions. And this is something that is really high on our list for multiple reasons. One of the biggest reasons is just pure safety. Many of the fields that we play on, especially for soccer, are just not safe right now. There's a bunch of potholes all over the place, I mean gopher holes. The areas where the goals are located, there's major, major dips, some of them about three or about a good foot and a half dip in between, which is really difficult for when you get six-year-olds, eight-year-olds, 10-year-olds to play in those type of conditions. It's really unsafe. And so what I'm asking for the council to do is to really help us out from a community perspective and really bringing these fields up to par, where we can actually engage in these activities with the youth, bringing in other teams as well, because that's another source of income. If we can have facilities where we can hold tournaments, where we can hold different types of activities of that nature, that also brings an additional revenue to the city. We just don't have those type of facilities at this point. Right now, it's very difficult for us to find a facility just to practice on. So we find portions of fields that are worthwhile, that we know kids can't get hurt on. So really asking the city council to really help us out here, and I'm speaking to more for soccer, but this goes across softball, football, any sport that really utilizes all of the parks here in Las Vanos. And we have many of them, but unfortunately, many of those parks just are not usable for these activities. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, would you please make an appointment with our public works director, city engineer, Mark Fajian?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, his name?
Juan Sandoval Tobias.
Okay.
Thank you. Juan Sandoval Tobias. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Rosie Rappel, and I'm here on behalf of Sunset Hills Development. I want to remind the council that the developer is here to pay his fees. He's willing to pay the fees that are ordered and mandated by state law. However, to require him to pay three times those fees is a bit of an injustice. He also would like the council to take into consideration that he is maintaining ownership over these lots. He's not passing them on, he's going to maintain them and here for the long term to continue to maintain those lots in this community. He's also looking for future development. He wants to be a permanent part of this community to assist in developing, making the city and maintaining city properties to the high quality and the respect that they already have. At the same time, to remind the council that SB 50 is still the law, you cannot make your decision tonight, taking into consideration those school impact fees. Again, he has seen and he has reviewed every condition of approval, he's reviewed every mitigation measure, and he's willing to abide by all of those. So to force him to enter into an agreement that requires him to pay three times what he's required to pay under state law would just be unfair. Again, he is very thankful and looking forward to your consideration on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring you back to council level, and we'll go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. And tonight, our items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Item on the consent agenda ours follows. Warrant numbers 204890 through 205194 in the amount of $1,631,393.12. Minutes for the May 17th, 2017 city council meeting. Minutes for the May 30th, 2017 adjourned city council meeting. Measure P Oversight Committee report. City Council Resolution Number 5860, approving a boundary map and declaring its intention to annex property to the city of Las Vanos Community Facilities District Number 2000-01, Public Safety Services, and to levy a special tax therein to finance certain public safety services for such Community Facilities District, Annexation Number 10, Overland Courts. City Council Resolution Number 5861, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase six new Panasonic 6F20 mobile data computers, one new Panasonic CF54 training computer, and four MDC video solutions from Lear in the amount of $70,449.77. City Council Resolution Number 5862, adopting a revised budget for the 2016-2017 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the amount of $2,900 in the general fund police department parking fees account. City Council Resolution Number 5863, authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Las Vanos Unified School District for school resource officer services for the 2017-through-2020 school years, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Not hearing, I will now ask for a motion. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
It's a motion by Lewis, second by Faria, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item number eight, BF CISC, Safety of Damns Presentation by, I'm going to butcher this probably, Minual Chowdery, PE, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, Project Manager.
Right there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and everyone. So... So my name is Minual Chowdhury and I'm the Project Manager of BF-C Safety of Dams Project. So we are in a state of this project that in design phase and I thought it would be a good time to give you an update on this project. And it's one of the largest projects that we have currently and the construction is scheduled to start in 2020. So I'm going to go over all this schedule and our project status in the next few slides. So here is our agenda, project location, then I'm going to talk about a little bit on dam safety concern, and then we have the scope and deliverables of the project and project task, what are we going to perform. And we have looked at many alternatives and we're going to talk about a little bit on that. And then we have project schedule and outreach activities and if you have any questions. I know everyone knows where is that BF-C's dam. Sorry. It's about 12 miles from Los Banos City, it's here, right here on the west of I-5. So this dam was built in 1963 to 67 and built by Bureau of Reclamation and owned by Bureau of Reclamation and operated and maintained by Department of Water Resources. It's a 3.5 mile long dam and 382 feet high. And you see there's a big reservoir and about 2.1 million acre feet of water is capacity of this reservoir. So what are the concern of this BF-C's dam? And what are we doing for this project? So BF-C's dam is serious above liquefiable and very soft soil. So during seismic shaking, portions of the dam can go slump below the water line. As a result, it can overtop and it can lead to dam failure. And another way dam can fail during seismic shaking, there's a lot of cracking will develop through the dam and internal erosion, which can lead to dam failure. So if the dam fails, then what can happen? It will inundate 100 miles from the dam site. It's going to inundate this Los Banos City and then it can, the water flow through the north and can go up to Stockton. And very large population at risk is about 150,000 people and inundation will likely cause significant loss of life. And in addition to, you know, property damage, significant infrastructure damage and other, like there are a lot of endangered species in this area and that will be endangered too. So, and also the risk exceeds the public protection guidelines by a factor of 30. So that's why we are trying to bring down this risk. So how are we going to do? So what are we doing about it? Reclamation and California Department of Water Resources are jointly conducting a corrective action study. So our goal is to address potential for dam failure and to provide a recommended alternative for the risk mitigation. Here's the project's scope. And scope is reduce the seismic risk posed by the BF-C's dam to meet reclamation's entering public protection guidelines. And we have some deliverables, that is, embankment dam meeting public protection guidelines and environmental document compliant with NEPA, CECA. And we also produce economic analysis and payment capacity documents, design and cost estimates, and modification report, including review by Commissioner, OMB, and then to Congress. So these are the tasks that we are performing. We are now at the 30% design stage, is a CAS corrective action study, we say. So our completion date is in 2017, end of this year. And we also are in the phase of environmental task and cultural resources. We also have finished some of the field investigation and final design is going to start in 2018. And we have mod report and economic analysis and procurement, and we have a construction and support and management, construction and environmental mitigation restoration task, and then finally we have post-construction documentation. So here are the alternatives that we developed for BF-CISC. So there's a non-structural alternatives and there are structural alternatives. So there's a three non-structural alternatives, that is, number one is you see do nothing, it doesn't help, but still we have this as an alternative because we want to see that economic analysis and OMB and Congress want to see that if you don't do anything, then what would be the result? So it's not going to help, so it's one of the alternative. And alternative two is the reservoir restriction. If we put a restriction in our reservoir, in our dam, then we're going to lose a lot of benefit. But still, we have to calculate the lost benefit analysis and that's in our, in the process. And if we have the breach, then also we're going to lost all the benefits of the project. But still, we have to include it in our, one of the non-structural alternative. But there's a four, three structural alternative that you see, one is 12 feet raise, another one is 18 feet raise, and another one is 25 feet raised dam. So these are the rays that we have for our dams is, you know, with berm and sand filter. I'll show you in the next few slides that those are, how it does look like. And so, so we have a crest raise and, sure.
What is NVS?
NVS is, there's a North Valley section. That's a good point. I'll, based on the geologic area, we divide it in four areas. So I'll show you in the next few slides where is, where is the NVS located and where is the SBS, all this located. So these are the structural alternatives that we have. So as I mentioned that, we, dam can fail in two ways. One is it has a dam can, it has a liquefiable soil underneath it and dam can slump. So as a result, it's overtopping. So, and it can breach. So now we need to have an alternate that is, we're going to raise it, keep the freeboard, additional available freeboard so that, you know, even though if it settle, still we have available freeboard so that it's not overtopping. And so, so there's a stability berm. So some areas, we have a very soft soil and that we can stabilize those areas with this berm. So the berm, this raise will, you know, fix the overtopping issue. And the other one is downstream crack filter. So we're going to include a sand layer of filter that on the downstream face so that if any cracking develops, it's going to fill with those filter so that no erosion is going to happen. Sure. I'm sorry?
Is this preventative maintenance that you're going to do?
It's not a maintenance. We're going to include those in our dam. So, you know, this is the construction, it's going to be construction.
Okay, so is the purpose to raise the height of the dam to hold more water?
No.
Okay, that's not the purpose.
Not the purpose, right.
Okay.
It's not the purpose. So this is for seismic fix, our dam. We're fixing this dam because this is, there's a huge seismic risk to this dam.
We've known that since 63.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, and when we designed it, dam in 1963, we thought that San Andreas Fault, that is like 40 miles away from here.
Yeah, this is an offshoot of the.
Right, so far away. But now, you know, seismic risk, those risk analysis have changed a lot in the last 20, 30 years. So we have found that Otigalita Fault that runs through the reservoir in recent years, like in 20 years ago, 15 or 20 years ago. So now we see that this fault produces more earthquake than the San Andreas Fault and this dam is right on the Otigalita Fault. So now, this, for this fault, it gives you more high risk than what we anticipated before.
So, so basically, the purpose of this presentation is to bring us up to date on what you're going to do to further make the dam safe?
Safe, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
So, so these are the components of the alternative. This is the, how it looks like. You see that there's a berm. I'm sorry, I cannot show it here and so, so here's a berm, you see, and on the yellow color, this area is berm and on the top, this is a crest raise. We raise it by, I'm sorry. So we are raising it about 12, 15 feet. So additional freeboard, it gives you additional freeboard. So if the dam slump, even it slumps, then still you have additional freeboard. So it's not overtopping. So the big issue is when the dam overtops, it fails. So we are preventing that overtopping. You got it? Okay.
Yeah, no, no. So what we're trying to do is we're going to make sure this presentation is very clear for everyone. So what you're doing is placing additional weight on top of the dam.
Right.
And then in case of a failure, what would happen is that if the dam slumped and it sunk because of a seismic activity, you would still have reserve on top to hold the water in.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Got it. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm kind of kitting this to like when the Corps of Engineers went into New Orleans after Katrina to shore up the walls to hold back water. This is kind of what you're anticipating, getting ahead of the game.
Right.
To prevent this from happening in this area.
Absolutely. That's right. So this is a cross-section shows that area that we don't need raise because some areas we have a good material that doesn't liquefy. So we don't need raise at that area. So I'll show you next slide is how it's going to look like this. So you see the red line at the middle? This portion is we need to raise it because there's the liquefiable soil that on that area. And your question is, SBS, you see the, so here is our, you see left apartment, then you see North Valley section, oh, here, North Valley section and then South Valley section. So this is NVS. So North Valley section is NVS and South Valley section is, so these are based on the geologic formation divided in four areas.
Excuse me, speaking to the microphone.
Sorry. So based on, you see the, here is a left apartment area here and then we have North Valley section and here is a South Valley section, then again is right apartment here. So we are, you see that blue color here, on the right, there's a two and on the left, there's a two and the middle is orange color, these are the berm. We're going to stabilize the areas, we put a berm in this area and we will have a raise, the red area, and throughout the dam, the yellow color you see throughout, we're going to put a face filter on the top of the downstream face. So it's going to, filter is going to be looked like this. You see here, the cross-section, yellow color. So there's the, that will prevent the cracking so that dam, for the seismic shaking, if it's a crack develops, this filter layer will go through those crack and fill those cracking.
It's made out of sand?
Sand filter, right.
Yeah, and that, so that filter is made out of sand?
Right.
It cracks the sand back?
Sand filter, that's right. So, so I think, Mr. Mayor, you have a question, like if you raise water for the water. We have another project, this is other group in our office, they are looking at the option, you know, reservoir raise project.
Right, there's several dams, you're talking about raising the levels.
Levels, right. So for this, they are looking at that, so, but I am not with that group. I'm, we are the dam safety branch that we are working. So we, so we are discussing the issue and they also look at that more closely with us, you know, for designing purpose, how it's going to work. So that is still, you know, negotiating with partners and there, there's another group of people is working on that project, so maybe they can give you an update on that.
Well, they told us this in Washington DC, that several dams were being considered.
Right.
With the San Luis Dam as one of them, so they could store more water by raising the ridge.
Ten more feet, right.
Yes, the ridge all the way around the dam itself.
Right.
So you're, you're.
But my portion, my.
Your portion is just dam safety.
Safety, that's right.
Yes, not dam safety, dam safety.
Right. That's right.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So when you say that, there's two different working groups, one that's for the safety aspect and one is for the more capacity aspect.
Capacity, right.
It would seem to me that it would be important that you guys are talking together right now because.
Yes.
If you get done with yours two years before they.
Working together.
You're working together. So if something was going to happen, it would happen at the same time, so you're not spending the same money twice.
Exactly. Absolutely right. So we are working same time, but I don't want to talk for that.
Understood.
You know what I'm saying? So they may give you guys another briefing or, you know.
Yeah, they're looking at other dams first, for that.
Thank you.
So here is the project's schedule, we have, we, so first one is corrective action study, that is what we are doing now, is basically 30% design. So it's going to be end in, end of this year. So in corrective action study, what we see, we look at all the alternatives and end of this year, we are going to pick one of the alternative that can go to, move to the final design phase. So, and we have already started EIS and EIR work, there's the environmental documentation that comply with NEPA and CECA. That will be done by December 2018. And from January 2018, we will start final design and end of, it will be done by December 2019. And we'll prepare mod report starting in January 2018. So mod report is that, as I mentioned, is a modification report that we will submit to OMB and then after OMB approval, we'll submit to Congress. So for the funding. So that is the, the next one is EC power meeting, that's all, any power meeting we need for this project, environmental power meeting, that will be done by December 2019. And so we'll send to OMB approval. So OMB approval depends on CAS, EIS, EIR, and the mod report. So once these three is done, is, OMB approval doesn't depend on final design or power meeting. So then we'll send it to OMB and then to Congress. Then in 2020, we'll start our construction phase and by July 2026, we'll be done with the construction.
Okay, we're talking nine years till completion?
Completion, right.
Okay. So, and that's only if Congress allocates the money?
For, yeah, this is, for our dam safety program, the way it works is we have a $1.2 billion ceiling for any fix of the dams in our Bureau of Reclamation. So, but still, if it's more than $20 million, any project, less than $20 million, we don't need to go to Congress. But if it's more than $20 million, we need to get buyout from Congress. So.
So you've done all your seismic work, correct?
We are doing design work.
No, I mean your seismic study.
Yeah.
Has that been completed?
Yes, that's right.
All right. So what is the chance of any sort of catastrophic failure of that dam at this point?
So this is, what we are looking at is about like, we said, 2,000-year return period. So this is, what we are looking at is about like, we said, 2,000-year return period. You need a 2,000-year return period means, you know, say like a hundred-year return period, we say like a 1% chance in a hundred years, right? 1% chance in a hundred years, so like that, like point 02% chance in any given year.
Of catastrophic failure?
Catastrophic failure. So that is very remote.
Okay.
It's not gonna happen in any given year.
Okay.
It's like, you know, this can happen in 2,000 years.
So for the public's...
Right.
For the public to know, then, you're saying that this dam is very safe at this point?
At this point, yes. And also, as you know, this dam is like controlled, controlled, that means water is lifted to the reservoir through the GNA pumping plant, and then also released, release the water through the pumping plant. So we can control the water in this...
Yeah, we know, it goes to LA.
LA, right.
Yeah.
So you need to have this, like if I say elevation, at least 500 feet elevations of this dam, water should be that level to have that seismic event happen.
So what you're saying, if your seismic readings change, and you see any sort of potential problem, you can lower the level of that dam rapidly?
Exactly, right.
And in order to avoid any type of failure?
Failure, right.
All right. Okay.
So, this is what we are showing in our schedule. So that is, okay, here you go. So the same schedule I'm showing here, you see the CS completion is end of this year, and then we, we have a final design starts right after that, and then by 2019, we'll be done, our final design. And we'll send to OMB and congressional notification. So, the reason we say congressional notification is, after OMB approval, our dam safety program, our project, we've sent to Congress, and it is, we allow 30 days, we have a waiting time when you send to Congress. And if it's, we don't hear from Congress, this automatically is granted for construction. So, that's why we just need to send to congressional, you know, notification, just send for, send for notification or notify them. And we wait only 30 days for that. And then it's construction, here is six years' construction. And the next slide is outreach activities. So, it's a huge project, and, you know, it's about, the cost is gonna be about $700 million. It's one of the largest project, right now, we have with the dam safety project in reclamation. So, we need to let everyone know what's happening, you know, and it's gonna, it started within next two, three years. So you can have plan for that, a lot of jobs will be created here. And, so, I'm sorry, for that, we provided briefing. Three months ago, I gave a briefing, Marquette County Board of Supervisors. And we have a website on the top, project website, if anyone have any questions, you can email me, you have an address there, and you can know all the information from this website. And we have email hotline, and press release, we issue solicitation, contract award, and when we start the construction, we have a press release. And I'd like to have any suggestions you have, any, for this project, if you have, you can tell me, I can, you know...
Influx of how many workers, do you think, over a six-year period?
Oh, this is, we haven't, I would say, that's a $700 million project.
Yeah.
So you say, I would say, a few thousand workers would be working.
Few thousand workers?
Yes, would be working.
See, I'm glad the school district is here tonight.
Yeah.
Because this happened in 1963, and there are a few of us that grew up here, and, and we had, we were on double sessions for our schools. It was a huge influx of individuals who came to work on the dam. Many of them retired and stayed here and raised their families, and that was, and some moved on to the next project. So if it's going to be that many people, and the construction is gonna start in 2020...
Right.
We're going to need, you're going to need to meet with our school district, and explain to them the amount of influx of workers over a six-year period that will be here in Los Banos, that possibly will be living in Los Banos also. So if you're talking about a few thousand workers, because this is not a small project, raising that 15 feet, or whatever, however you're going to do, 10 or 15 feet. So I would suggest that then, we start working with economic development, also with, with our city manager, and the school district, and any other entity that's going to be affected by this. So, because we only have, right now, three years to plan.
Right, yeah. I said it was a good plan.
So, so I would suggest that the meetings start ASAP, and, and that there are things that are gonna come up, and things that we're going to need to do. So, and in fact, like I said, the school district is probably the one that's going to be the most affected, so...
Sure. So I'll contact with Mark first, and then can get the, okay, sure.
Okay. Yes, talk to our Mark, talk to our city manager. Call the, we have a new school superintendent, but our board president is here tonight, Anthony Pereira, Anthony Wave. And, and so he will, he will help you with contacts, because right now, we're a day late. And three years is not much of time for us to plan for the influx of all these workers.
Absolutely, this is a good plan, yeah.
Then we better talk to our surrounding cities, too, Augustine and Dos Falls, to make sure that they know what's happening, because it's probably something that, you know, someone didn't think of to let them know.
Sure.
So, yes, go ahead.
Well, and then if you talk about, you're talking, your portion of the project is $700 million, and the amount of people it's gonna employ, if, if they do, comes to a point where they're gonna do, raise the dam, as well as secure it for structural deficiencies, could be even more people?
Yeah, not, I mean, it's same type of work, you know, but maybe a few more, you know?
Yeah.
A few hundred more people will be working.
Very good.
Yeah. Any questions, another?
Questions from council or staff at this time? Anyone? Mr. Feria?
Just a comment, I heard you write, you said that it's a factor of 30?
Thirty.
Thirty times less safe than it should be?
Yes, that's right.
And at that rate, and so then you said over the next, what, 100 years, we have a point 02%?
No, we say like a 1% chance is, 1% is 100 years.
100 years?
Right, 1%. So our estimate is for 2,000-year period, return period.
Okay.
So 2,000 year, it's like a point 0, 1.02 or something.
But in 100, but in 100 years, you said 1%?
1%, yeah, yeah, probability, it's a 1% probability in any year.
Okay.
That's called 100-year return period.
Okay.
So that's how you back calculate.
1% is pretty high.
Yeah, 1% pretty high, yeah. So that's what a 100-year return period...
Let's get it fixed. If you need us to go to, if you need us, if you need our help to speed up the process...
Right, yeah.
I'll be glad to go anywhere with you.
Sure.
Thanks.
No problem.
The, the fault itself was discovered right after the dam was built, if I remember right, and, or during construction, you know, and they discovered it was an offshoot of the Hayward or San Leandro Fault. And, and I remember that in 1963, that, that they were telling us about it, but, but...
They don't think that it was active at that time?
No, no. I, I think that they knew there was a fault there, but they, they weren't quite sure of, you know, what to do with it. The dam was in place, so you couldn't move it. But, but anyway, I'm glad to see that the Bureau of Reclamation is, is taking steps to take care of this, and, and now, I think, more importantly, will be the, the influx of individuals that will be, will be residing in Los Banos and the surrounding areas. And I think another person, another group that we need to meet with is probably the hospital staff.
Sure.
Because of, and I'm just trying to think of, of, of all the, the individuals that are gonna be affected by this. And then we're talking about physicians, hospital staff, you know, this might spur someone on to build a new facility earlier, I don't know.
Yeah, another thing is, I should tell that, that recreation facility is there, it could be, you know, impacted with these constructions, and maybe remain closed at that time.
So is there any mitigation money available for, to offset disadvantaging the community?
That, for community, that I can't tell right now, if there is any, but the 700 million about this for that project. So dam safety program, not only for the project. But, it's related to, I saw that other project that maybe that, if you need to, you know, build, there are roads are, you know, smaller size near that area, we can develop that at the same time. So it shouldn't cost that much, you know, comparing 700 million dollars.
All right, okay. Stacy, could you start to work on a list, and for economic development, and of what we need to do of all the different agencies that we need to contact that could be affected by this? Thank you. And then maybe, after you meet with staff, and meet with some of the entities, you could come back and give us an update and a progress of how this is gonna be implemented?
Sure, absolutely, okay.
Okay, and then, and then before you leave, talk to Mr. Pereira, to make sure he can get you on a, on a board schedule, a board meeting schedule, so you can go there and give them the same joyous news.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, staff, council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's go on to item nine, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in the public hearing described herein, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of proposed revisions to the Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And item A1, ordinance number 1156, amending and remunerating Chapter 2 of Title 10 of the Los Banos Municipal Code, City of Los Banos Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance in its entirety. And this is a second reading and adoption, and we are going to go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
Marshall, it's our secretary.
Oh, okay? Oh, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, audience. Tonight, before you is the second reading and consideration of adoption of the Los Banos Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance. It was presented to you in depth last May 17, I believe it was, where we went through the ordinance pretty much in detail. I'll give you the short version tonight, no PowerPoint. The short version is, is that as a result of the drought we have been, drought conditions we've been going through in the state of California over the last few years, there have been a number of executive orders coming down from Governor Brown. One of those is which required a rewriting of the model, state model, of the Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance, and requires all agencies, local public agencies, to adopt a model or something close to it. And so that's what's before you tonight. The highlights of the ordinance essentially are that landscaping for 500 square feet or more, which is less than the current 2,500 square feet requirement, will now be required to meet the water efficiency requirements of the statute, which is a full laundry list of things such as more efficient sprinklers, not planting turf in areas in which overspray will get on, get into hardscape. And in fact, they have redone the water budget so that turf will only be possible in approximately 25% of a landscape area, and will probably not be feasible at all in a commercial setting. The City of Los Banos also has a water schedule that we've incorporated, and this, this would apply to all new commercial and new residential landscaping throughout the city. It's nothing new, we go through this process now. What is new is the budget, it's gonna be much more restrictive. The water budget is gonna be much more restrictive to new and refurbished landscaping than it has been in the past. This, again, we have been going through this, we have a current, our current ordinance was adopted some five or six years ago, and we have a process for this, and so we will just be melding these new formulas into our process. One of the things that was introduced, asked to be changed from the proposed ordinance at the last meeting, was the number of days for irrigation, overhead irrigation. And I'll just draw your attention to page 20 of the ordinance that's before you tonight, that was changed to change from two watering days a week per address number to three. And so that, that's the major change that was made at the last meeting to the ordinance that was proposed. That change has been made, that change was introduced at the last meeting. So what we're asking that you do tonight is open the public hearing, receive any public comments, close the public hearing, and consider adoption of the Los Banos Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance as introduced. And Mark, Stacy, and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. If you'd like to see the PowerPoint again, we can, we can fire it up for you.
Who wants to see it?
Oh, darn.
Okay, hearing none. All right. Council, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, let me open the public hearing on ordinance number 1156. Is there anyone wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, we will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And do I have any comments or a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1156 as read by title.
Ms. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, seconded by Freya, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1156. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1156 as read by title.
Ms. Freya?
Second.
Okay. A motion from Lewis, seconded by Freya, to adopt ordinance number 1156. Roll call, Director Maloney?
Freya?
Or Director, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yes?
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Walta?
Yes. Motion carried. Item B, public hearing, to receive public comment, consideration of a levy of the proposed annual assessment for 2017, 2018 fiscal year for landscaping lighting districts 1 through 7 and 9 through 19. Item 1B, City Council Resolution Number 5864, confirming diagram assessment of, and a levying of assessments and landscaping lighting assessments, districts 1 through 7, 9 through 19, for 2017, 2018 fiscal year. And we'll go to Mr. Fajian.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna present to you the assessments that we're asking for through the engineers' report for 2017 and 18 for 18 landscaping and lighting districts. Each year, we hold a public hearing to confirm and authorize a levying of these assessments, which is what tonight is. The assessments are based on an annual report for each landscaping and lighting district as prepared by the city engineer, city engineering staff. as prepared by the city engineer, city engineering staff. And after the public hearing, if the council so confirms and authorizes that the levying of assessments will be sent to the county, and they will put that on the tax rolls. The 2017, 2018 landscaping and lighting districts annual assessments were publicly noticed in the local newspaper on May 19th, 2017. I have not received any input on that yet. Now, the items that these assess, these districts handle are varied, but they include street lighting, landscaped street medians and rideaways, storm drainage facilities, water sewage in disposal, parking-related facilities, masonry walls and fences, and traffic signals if there is a traffic signal in the district. The, the engineer's report actually consists of A to F parts, and the first part is plans and specs, which is all the plans and specs for the multitude of subdivisions or commercial ventures that make, make a part of the 18 assessment districts. Part B, which is included in the report, is an estimate of the 2017, 18 landscaping and lighting maintenance and improvement costs. That's the part B. Part C is an assessment for each benefited parcel of land in the landscaping and lighting district. That just takes the approved assessment amount per lot and actually puts it on the individual lots. Part D, which is also in your report, part B and part D are in your report, is a statement on the method of how the assessment was spread and why it was spread to each benefit parcel of land in the landscaping and lighting district. It explains why some were raised, some were, were not raised, and some had cost of living raises. Part E is a list of names and addresses of owners of real property within landscaping lighting district. It's not part of your packet because your packet would be immense if we got, gave that to you. Part F is actually a supplement of part A. It's a diagram showing landscaping lighting parcels. It's really the official recorded documents and the official recorded maps. It's, it's a diagram, it's all encompassing of many, many drawings that shows all the creation of these subdivisions, and that's part of the record. So they're all, they all can be, anyone can look at these. We do have to look them up if they need to, but the rest of these will be, this is all requirement of a engineer's report. We're looking at the assessments this, this year, and what I did a little different this year, I put a little chart together, the district numbers, the district names, the proposed assessment that were for 17 and 18, and the increase in the assessment for 17 and 18. District 1 is proposed to go up by cost of living. What we did this year is the, and I think there was, should know this, I think there was four, yeah, there was four of these assessment districts that have a cost of living adjustment, which in the final, when we finally get these districts to where we want them to be, when they, when they're evened out, what you should see is basically 16 to 18 of these cost of living adjustments, whether it's up or down. And that's what you'll see every year because they will be balanced out. We've been working very hard trying to get some of these negatives out, and it's, it's coming to fruition, but we're still a good four or five years before we can get to the point we really want to be with full service and getting our negative out of, out of these districts. So the first one is, is consists of three districts, it's Ransworth Estates, Vineyards and Dollar General make up District 1, and that's a cost of living indexed up only. And that's based on the 2016 California Consumer Price Index, increase of 2.25%. District number two is Crest Hills. It has no increase this year. The balance, we are allowed a 50% balance forward is what you try to, try to get near. So you do have a cushion for the year in case you need it, and that's subtracting any capital that you may be planning. So if you, if you have 50% in there and you also have a $20,000 capital project, you can put your 50% plus your $20,000, and that's about where you look to be on your balance forward. So I can go through each one of these, but you can see the ones that we have marked here, the zeros, obviously, there's no increase. The ones with the asterisk are just the cost of living increase of 2.25%. Two of these, District number 11, District number 12, because of the way they were formed and the rules, are only allowed a 5% increase at the maximum, and they, they got the maximum. The other ones, the maximum is 10%, and that was set up when the districts were set up. So you can go through these and you can see how much they're going up. Now, of course, the highest amount of increase is the acre ones because of how much can develop on an acre. It's just an acre cost. The residential, I believe, the highest one is $33, I believe. Yeah, there's a $33 per year increase in one of them. So if there's any questions on that, I can go forward on that. One thing that is happening now on these is we are getting, we are doing better on a couple of these that are in the negative, or they're coming forward. Couple of these, depending on, one is Metal Arc, landscaping lighting district, it's over by the Pacheco High School north of that. It's, it's north and south of that, and there's two very large subdivisions that are being in the approval process stage now, and when they develop out, that one actually will clear pretty fast. And that, and it has quite a bit of a negative on there, but that will clear very, very quickly. Stone Creek is over by, on the west side of town, and that's another one that's quite negative, but even already the new subdivision, I think there was one that came in last year, it's already at a $700 level because it came in at the exact price. That actually, that district, although it's negative, did not increase because it shows, shows clearing up in like three years, and it's clearing up immensely. Once it clears up, after you take away the capital costs and you take away the balance forward, then there's, then there'll be adjustments between how high it is and where it should be when it's finally there. So you, when it finally does clear, some of these, you actually may see some decreases in the three or four years from now, once we get to where we get our deficits out and we're not deficit spending in them anymore.
Okay.
So let me go on to, those are all, now, staff's recommendation is to conduct, to conduct, excuse me, a notice public hearing to solicit input on the landscaping and lighting district annual assessments, and to adopt the resolution which confirms the diagram and assessments and levying assessments for landscaping lighting districts number 1 through 7, and numbers 9 through 19 for fiscal year 2017 and 18. If this is so approved, then that allows the city to submit the levy, the levies to the county to be placed on the tax rolls. And these numbers have been incorporated into the budget.
Counsel, any questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who wishes to speak on City Council Resolution Number 583, or 5864? Not seeing or hearing anyone, we will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and do I have comments or a motion? Ms. Freya?
I don't know if anyone has any comments. We discussed it last meeting. I would move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5864 as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, seconded by Lewis, to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5864. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to item C, to receive public comment and consideration of amendments to Article 41, Chapter 3, Title 9, Special Events Ordinance and Special Event Fees. And ordinance number 1157, amending sections 9-3 dot 411 of Article 41, Chapter 3, Title 9 of the Los Vanos Municipal Code relating to special events and public property, on public property, and City Council Resolution Number 5865, establishing a policy regarding waiver of par, or partial waiver of departmental service charges relative to special events. Yes? Sir?
Thank you. If you please excuse me, I must recuse myself on this item as it directly affects the Chamber of Commerce. My wife is the executive director there, so it creates conflict of interest.
Okay. Okay. Director Elms? There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So as promised, this is a, an amendment to our special events ordinance. Just a little bit of background, back in September of 2015, the City Council adopted the special events ordinance. Then in, a year later, in September of 2016, the City Council directed staff to coordinate stakeholder meetings, to review and provide a recommendation for potential changes for City Council consideration. And also at that meeting, the City Council temporarily suspended special event departmental service charges until further City Council action could be taken. There were stakeholder meetings as directed to hold. They were held in November of 2016 and January of 2017. And at those meetings, it was discussed the existing ordinance, our existing permit process, our application fees, and then also departmental service charges. And the stakeholders group provided a recommendation to the City Council. Going through the existing ordinance, there was not much discussion on the permit process or the application fees. The main focus of the discussion was around major events and departmental service charges. It was agreed by the stakeholders group that there were no recommended changes for the permit process or minor events and how those permits are processed. But again, it was directed towards departmental service charges and how that affects major events such as parades. Then in April of 2017, the City Council directed staff to prepare an amendment to the ordinance, to the special events ordinance, to allow the waiver or partial waiver of departmental service charges. That was based on the recommendation that they received from the stakeholders group. So the Planning Commission in May of 2017 did review this proposed ordinance and held a public hearing at that meeting, and recommended approval of the proposed ordinance amendment. The proposed ordinance amendment provides the ability to grant waivers or partial waivers of the departmental service charges. And the departmental service charges are actual costs that departments incur in connection with each special event. And those can include, but they're not limited to, fire safety, traffic and/or pedestrian controls, closure of streets or intersections, diverting of traffic, salaries of city personnel involved in the administration or coordination of city services, the use of equipment, materials and supplies, cleanup and restoration, and also related city costs such as fringe benefits or employee overtime. What we see, the biggest intensive cost in most major events are overtime for our police officers, as well as the cost for overtime for public works to help with the safety of the closure of streets for these special events. Public Works turns on the blinking red lights for the traffic signals downtown. They also provide the barricades, and the police department in major parades provides traffic control with police officers. They provide no parking 24-hour signs. They're manning the event, and all items that they're providing because of these special events that occur. So the policy that was created was to establish a waiver or a partial waiver of departmental service charges. As the way that the ordinance, the original ordinance was set up, it did not provide any flexibility for the City Council to provide a waiver or a partial waiver. So in addition, we're also creating a policy, and that's before you in a resolution. The purpose is to set forth criteria for the City Council to consider of a waiver or a partial waiver. And this would only be applicable to major events. So this would not apply to minor events such as relays or street, street fairs, religious processions. It would not apply to any of those types of events, only parades, or those similar, like parades, major events similar to that. It is required to meet certain criteria, and it would be subject to the sole discretion of the City Council whether to provide that waiver or partial waiver. The criteria that's established within the attached resolution, it would be required that it would be for a not-for-profit organization serving primarily the citizens of Los Vanos with tax-exempt status. Have to be an event open to the public, free of charge. Active service to the community for one year prior to the event. It have to have a major event that was, has occurred at least one time previously with a special event permit. It would have to benefit or enhance the business community or provide cultural enrichment. The event would need to be of citywide significance. It could not be a religious or political event. It would need to be cultural, social, or recreational benefit to the community. And then there's any other criteria as established by the City Councils. This is the criteria, the basis for the policy that staff is asking for the City Council to consider. Also, within this policy, it provides for three events that would be exempt from departmental service charges. So it'd identify those events that would receive a full waiver. It would be for the May Day Parade, the Veterans Day Parade, and the Christmas Parade. And these are, because these are longstanding benefits and/or beneficial to our community. And they would be subject to also no intensification of the event. So should the May Day Parade decide to change their route and intensify their use, then they would no longer be, their fees, departmental service charges would no longer be waived. They would be subject to departmental service charges. So this waiver would only stand if their event stays consistent as it is today, or is less intense than it is today. Also, for minor events and major event applications, that will not change. Minor event application fee is $60, and major event application fees are $150. So regardless of the waiver or partial waiver, the application permit fees are still applicable.
Stacy, really quick, back to the, the major events, the three exempt parades. So if their route changed, say the Christmas parade's route decided to change, would they still be, fall under the part where the council has discretion as to weigh, whether or not they want to waive partial or all of their fees?
Sure, the City Council could consider that. It would require reconsideration. They just would not be exempt per the policy if they do intensify. Now, they are looking at rerouting, I do know, and just speaking with the chamber, they're looking at rerouting the Christmas parade to create a less intense parade route, and by doing so, that would not trigger reconsideration by the council.
Okay, very good. But it's just, because kind of the way that you had said it, it's if they change their route to a more intense route, that they would no longer be able to be exempt, but they, they would still, they still would be eligible for a waiver, just not as one of the exempt events.
Exactly. They would just, it would be to the sole discretion of the City Council whether to approve that intensification.
Thank you.
So the request for waiver would consist of filing a letter with the City of Los Vanos, and then the City Council would have the sole authority to approve the fee waiver or partial waiver based on the established criteria within the policy. Departmental service charges, on June 21st, 2017, a resolution will be brought before the City Council proposing a resolution to establish the service charge rate for minor and special events. This is so that organizations know what that rate would be. A part of the discussion that we had with the stakeholders groups were that these organizations did not know, was the unknown of what these departmental service charges would be. Their events mainly did affect the minor events. So as the chamber plans and budgets for their year, they need to know what these departmental service charges would be. So what I'm proposing is taking the data that we've had for the last two years since this ordinance has been in effect, and provide an overhead cost based on the averages of what we know these events cost the city, and that we would provide a flat fee based on those historical charges that we've received. We have a couple of years' worth of data that now we know what these, these events cost the city to provide, and that way, these particular organizations know ahead of time. Also, those fees would be on a, would increase with the cost of living, with the Consumer Price Index, so that would change every year, so that they would rise with the cost of living as well, as the city's incurring those costs. So the fiscal impact, what this- We have a couple of years' worth of data that now we know what these events cost the city to provide. And that way, these particular organizations know ahead of time. Also, those fees would be on a, would increase with the cost of living, with the Consumer Price Index. So that would change every year, so that they would rise with the cost of living as well, as the city's incurring those costs. So the fiscal impact, what this would impact the city is that the city would absorb the costs for the May Day Parade, the Veterans' Day Parade, and the Christmas Parade. And according to staff's calculations, based on historical records from last year, this would be about $6,700 that the city would be absorbing to waive those three events with their departmental service charges. So public comment, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banas Enterprise on May 26, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Any questions of Stacy regarding ordinance number 1157 and 5865? Okay, let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Yeah, Stacy, just want to back up a little bit on the organizations that are exempt from paying, well, the combined cost of $6,700. And if they intensify, if you just take that figure of 6,700 divided by three, is it, they would be responsible for paying that portion of it, or is it some other calculation formula that you're going to use?
It is, each event is separate, it is not equal, equally divided, and that's just based on their parade routes. The Christmas Parade is the most intense parade for the city to provide services to.
I was just using that as an example, to divide it by three. So just roughly, that would be a portion that they would be responsible for if they intensified their parade.
Although the Christmas Parade would be paying a little bit more then.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Santos.
My question is for, you said we have about a couple of years of data based off the most recent charges. Were, have they drastically changed, or we just officially set them for the past two years?
It's exactly that. Prior to that, we were not charging departmental service charges. And after this new ordinance, we began to charge the departmental service charges. So we do have, as of 2015, that data.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on ordinance number 1157 or City Council Resolution Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And do I have a motion on ordinance number, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1157? Mr. Silvera.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1157 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Silvera, second by Santos, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1157. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Silvera.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1157 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Silvera, second by Santos, to, for the introduction of ordinance number 1157. Director Maloney.
Furia Johnson-Santos.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Silvera.
Yes.
Walta.
Yes. Motion carried. Let's go on, Mr. Silvera, to City Council Resolution number 5865.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution number 5865 establishing a policy regarding waiver or partial waiver of departmental service charges relative to special events.
Mrs. Santos.
Second that.
Okay, motioned by Silvera to approve City Council Resolution number 5865, and then second by Johnson-Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, I'm going to take about a five, six-minute break.
You're going to get one right now anyway. You're going to leave for...
No, no, I want to do this first, and then I'll come back and do that. Okay, so we're going to take about a five, six, seven-minute break, and then we'll come
All right, if I could have everyone back in the council chambers. All right, we're gonna go on to item 10, but at this time, I have to recuse myself because I live within 500 feet of the property area and our city attorney also, did you want to say something?
Yes, I've represented Mr. Rocha within the last 12 months, so I must step down as well.
Okay, all right, and Mayor Protem Silveira will take over.
All right, item number 10, consideration of approval of general plan amendment number 2016-02, a zone change, number 2016-02, and mitigated negative declaration, State Clearing House number 2017-021033. The project proposal is for the general plan amendment and rezone of seven parcels currently designated professional office P-O into medium density residential R-2 on 1.2 acres and to subdivide seven existing parcels into 11 parcels for the development of 11 detached single-family residential units. The project site is located on the east side of Delaware Avenue between Pine Street and Madrone Street, more specifically identified as Assessor's parcel number 027-214-001 through 007, Sunset Hills Development. The public hearing was closed on April 19, 2017, and action item was continued from the May 17, 2017, City Council meeting. And we will go to the Community and Economic Development Director, Mrs. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Protem, and City Council. So just a little bit of a recap to refreshen us of what happened back in April. The City Council held a public hearing on that date regarding this item, Sunset Hills Development Project. The public hearing was opened and public comments were received. One letter was received from the Los Manos Unified School District and public comment from the school district, as well as the applicant, was received that night. Then the public hearing was closed, and staff was directed to come back to the City Council with a response to the Los Manos Unified School District's comment letter. And that letter is provided for you in your staff report packet. And a response to that letter, I will go into it further on in the presentation. So the project description, just to refresh your memories, it is a general plan amendment and a zone change to redesignate seven parcels on approximately 1.2 acres from professional office to R2 medium-density residential. It is also to subdivide the project site into 11 residential lots, which range from 4,600 square feet to over 5,500 square feet, and to develop the 11 detached, single-family residential dwelling units, so to develop those 11 lots into single-family detached homes. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on March 22, 2017, and recommended approval of mitigated negative declaration, general plan amendment number 2016-02, and zone change number 2016-02 to Los Manos City Council. And also, at that night, they did approve vesting tentative tract map number 2016-03 and site plan review number 2016-07. The tentative tract map was to divide, subdivide, the seven parcels into 11, in conformance with the medium-density zoning district, which would be contingent upon the City Council approving a zone change and a general plan amendment. And then the site plan review was for approval of the architecture of the design of the 11 single-family detached homes that is proposed on these lots. This is the location of the property. It is on Delaware Avenue, north of Los Manos Memorial Hospital. It's in between Madrone Street and Pine Street. To the north is single-family residential dwelling units. To the east is multifamily, high-density apartment complexes. To the south, as I said, is Los Manos Memorial Hospital, which is a civic institutional use, land use. And then to the west is, it is zoned, single-family residential, however, there are triplexes and single-family residential dwelling units. And this is the existing zoning map. So the pink-purple fuchsia color is professional office, and the project site is highlighted for you, it's outlined for you in black, and there's an arrow pointing to it. So the fuchsia is professional office, as I stated, yellow is single-family residential, R1. The brown color is high-density, R3, multifamily apartment complexes. And then blue is institutional civic uses. So on three sides, this particular project is surrounded by residential uses. The environmental analysis, an initial study was provided, was prepared to identify and assess potential environmental impacts of this particular project. Staff determined that the project would not result in any significant environmental effects, provided that the mitigation measures described within the initial study and mitigated negative declaration are implemented. Staff then prepared a notice of intent and posted this with the Merced County Clerk and delivered a copy to the California Office of Planning and Research, which is the State Clearing House for circulation, and also hand-delivered the notice of intent with the initial study mitigated negative declaration to the Los Manos Unified School District. And then received one comment letter from the Los Manos Unified School District on April 19. Further into the California, excuse me, the environmental analysis, and this is the city's response to the Los Manos Unified School District's letter, written by Megan Macy, who spoke earlier tonight, which represents the Los Manos Unified School District. I won't summarize again what that letter was, as that was read into the record last meeting on April 19, but I do want to provide a response. If you should need copies of that letter, it's within your packet, or if you need me to slow down and then again summarize what that letter consisted of, I can do that as well. But I'm just going to dive into the city's response. So our response to that letter is that the California Legislature has declared school impact fees to be adequate mitigation under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, for impacts on school facilities. This includes impacts on both onsite and offsite schools. The Chauanaki case, that is highlighted within the letter provided from the school district, that they provide the environmental impact report, was not inadequate because the EIR failed to mitigate impacts to schools through payment of Senate Bill 50 fees. So the school district wanted to point out the Chauanaki case and that particular EIR, but the city would like to respond and reiterate that that EIR was not found to be inadequate because it failed to mitigate impacts through SB 50 fees. That wasn't the case at all. Actually, the court held that the EIR was inadequate because it failed to analyze the indirect physical environmental impacts that resulted from constructing additional schools needed to house new students. And this was because it wasn't, it did not analyze air quality, traffic, and noise from construction and operation. The indirect physical impacts is also an issue that was raised within the letter from Megan Macy. And the indirect physical impacts associated with transportation are evaluated throughout the initial study and mitigated negative declaration provided for you. The potential impacts from temporary construction activities at existing school sites are limited to air quality, noise, and water quality. The Air Pollution Control District has several rules and regulations regarding criteria air pollutants that would apply to school construction to reduce impacts to less than significant. So this is indirect physical impacts, and this is during the construction of schools. So mitigation that schools can do to help with air quality. And our Air Pollution Control District does provide rules that do help mitigate with those issues. Also, best practices and SWIP, which are stormwater pollution prevention plans, are used to prevent construction-related pollutants from entering stormwater runoff. Those are basic city policies and city standard criteria for all construction. And noise is mitigated through hours of construction and mufflers on exhaust equipment. That is provided within the mitigation and monitoring reporting plan. It's provided within the initial study. It's also criteria of the City of Las Manos. We have a noise ordinance, we have hours which construction can commence operations. So on weekdays, they can't commence before 7:00 a.m., and on weekends, they can't commence before 8:00 a.m. And then it is reasonable to presume that such measures would be implemented by the Los Manos Unified School District when it decides to construct these new facilities. And it'd also be studied within those initial studies for each of those individual schools that would be built. So new students are expected to be generated gradually over time. It's not expected that these students would just appear immediately. And also, the city is assuming that no school expansion has occurred. And if this happens, that no school expansion has occurred in this meantime, then CEQA, minor additions to school, exempts projects that add up to the lesser of 25% of new capacity or 10 classrooms to any existing school site. So the indirect impacts resulting from interim or permanent additions to existing schools would not result in any new significant impacts, and this is per CEQA. Also, there are four options proposed within the letter provided by the school district. The first is that the developer should participate in a community facilities district. And our response to this alternative is that the city cannot impose such a requirement. This particular requirement would need to be a voluntary program that the city could not condition a project to do. It would need to generate any additional funding towards school. This particular community facilities district would not generate any additional funding towards school construction. So it would not address the issue that the school district is bringing up. Second, the ordinance prohibiting or delaying projects is an alternative that the school district also suggested. And this would be problematic, as it may violate Government Code Section 65995I, and that the city is prohibited from delaying such projects. We are bound by the Subdivision Map Act to process projects within a permit processing act, as well as a due process with any projects that we receive through a general plan or zone change. And then the growth management, this is another alternative, that growth management with policies that incentivize developers to provide additional school funding. And again, this would be the same as condition number two, this would be problematic because we would be in violation of government code. And then the last alternative is that the city would impose additional project conditions. And the city does have general plan policies that do address these issues, including street design, traffic safety, and noise standards that were brought up based on the CEQA issues suggested within the letter. So school facilities. Senate Bill 50 allows the state to offer funding to school districts to acquire school sites, construct new schools, and modernize existing schools. This establishes a process for determining the amount of fees developers may be charged to mitigate the impact of development on school facilities resulting from the increase of enrollment. The school district can charge fees above the statutory cap, under specified conditions, and then up to the amount of funds that the district would be eligible to receive from the state. So this is currently what the school district is requesting of the developer, the applicant. But according to government code, SB 50 fees are deemed to be full and complete school facilities mitigation. Also, SB 50 specifically limits cities and counties from prohibiting, imposing an exaction in excess of that provided by statute. So the state has mandated the tier, there's a tier two and a tier three, that the school district is allowed to charge particular developments for school facilities and the impact of school facilities. And SB 50 has prohibited cities from imposing an exaction in excess of that. It also prohibits from denying a land use approval on the basis of a developer's refusal to provide school facilities mitigation that exceeds the amount authorized by statute. It's prohibited from using the inadequacy of school facilities as a basis for denying or conditioning a land use approval. And the payment of development fees is considered full and complete mitigation of impacts on the provision of adequate school facilities. You've also received a memo before the April 19 meeting from our special land use attorney, Bill Abbott, which advised you on SB 50 and what that requires the city, the focus of the city council, and what it prohibits you from doing, as I just outlined in this slide. The project analysis, it is, as staff has determined, to be compatible with adjacent uses. It abuts existing high-density and multifamily units to the east, and it's adjacent to triplexes and single-family residential uses to the west. It's good planning in that it creates a transition between high-density and low-density uses. And it also creates developable lots. These lots have been vacant since they were created, as this area was subdivided, as was starting to be developed, with the creation of the hospital and the various homes that were built around it. These particular lots on this 1.2 acres were originally designed for residential development, and then, over the course of Las Manos's history, they were rezoned, and it was the administration and the elected officials' opinion at that time that additional high-density multifamily units was not desired in that particular area. But what the applicant is providing is single-family detached homes to remove the blight from the area and to help beautify with new 1,400-square-foot homes that would house single-family homes, single families, excuse me. So public comment, the public hearing notices were published in the Los Manos Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on April 7, 2017. And as of today's date, one comment letter was received from the Los Manos Unified School District, and no comments have been received by the surrounding neighbors, the surrounding The public hearing was opened on April 19 and also closed on that date. So staff's recommendation at this time is that the City Council would provide a motion of intent to adopt Resolution Number 5856, approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting plan for Sunset Hills Development. They would provide a motion of intent to adopt Resolution Number 5857, approving general plan amendment number 2016-02, to designate the property from professional office to medium-density residential, and then waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1154 by title to rezone the property known as Sunset Hills Development from professional office to R2 medium-density residential. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, are there any questions of council at this time? Ms. Faria?
Yeah, I'm, you know, there are a lot of houses getting built now, and we inherited them. We inherited that annexed land, we inherited those entitlements, we inherited those residential zonings. So we have to honor them. Some of us were here in 2009 when we took a meat cleaver, I voted against it, we took a meat cleaver to the public safety budget, dropped our public safety numbers by 25%. Over time, public works took hits too, without filling positions as people left. And what's happened is that now our general fund, which supplies those public safety services, and I think it supplies some public works as well, is that correct? Our general fund is just now getting back to where it was at the peak of 2007, '08. But that same public safety, those same police officers, for instance, cost us $2 million a year more than they did then for fewer officers, because of the cost of living, the cost of employee. And what's happened in Las Manos is we have been very powerfully impacted by the Bay Area's refusal to build sufficient housing for the workforce, and it forced families to commute in order to afford a house. So it's raised the values of the property. It caused the city years ago to annex lots and lots of land. I think we're still able to build over 1,000 homes without annexing anything else or changing any zones. My concern is, I'm not happy changing the zone to residential. I'm not happy annexing land for residential unless I know there's some kind of fiscal analysis telling me that we're going to be able to provide the services necessary to serve those citizens. And this, the reason I ran in the first place was because the services weren't being met by the large numbers. I mean, our pool, which was, it was owned by the school district, it was on their property, but we used to share the work and we used to share the operations. It's gone. We don't have a public pool in a town of 40,000 people. So that's just one service that's not being met. Our public safety people are stretched, and I know this is a small development, but it's a development nonetheless, and I think this is a place to stand. I don't, I can't recall annexing a piece of residential property since 2008, Villa Barano, if my memory serves me correctly, back when the economy was going strong. And that was an internal annexation, but that was before the crash and before the cuts. Until I can see that we've recovered, I can't support rezoning any property into residential, nor could I support annexing any property into residential unless I can see some fiscal analysis, some kind of financial benefit to the city, where we're going to be able to provide these services, because it's not, it's not fair to the people who are here, living here now, and it's not fair for the people who might buy those houses in the future.
Anybody else? So what I'm gonna do is, I'm going to, this is, just as, I want to state for the record, this is no longer a public hearing, so your comments will no longer be on a matter of the, Stacy, what's the word I'm looking for here?
So it will be a part of the overall proceedings, but not included in the public hearing, the public record of the public hearing. And the Government Code 65009 says that court testimony will be limited to only those issues that were raised during the public hearing.
So, but I do want to give an opportunity to speak if anybody wants to speak. I think it's just the right thing to do. So your time, you'll be allowed five minutes, so.
David Dees, a resident of Las Manos. I happen to be on the Planning Commission, but I'm representing myself, and I'm not speaking for the Planning Commission in any way. I, when, I was not aware, at the time our vote was made, that the schools would not be fully funded at the level that would allow the expansion to cover the houses that are gonna be built there. And as I listen to the rules that are very complicated, it seems that we are, our hands are tied behind our backs, and we have to say yes to this. I would encourage you to consider a no vote, because as Councilman Faria has stated, we need to draw a line somewhere, and our kids cannot suffer from having yet another place, another area created where we can build houses. There are huge benefits from having this done. I understand the project is a great project, but this one issue about not being able to fund our schools? We have to have schools for our kids. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Anthony Pereira. I'm president of the Board of Trustees of the Los Manos Unified School District. And you heard from our attorney earlier this evening, and also Vice President of the Board, Dennis Reyes. And so they kind of talked about the issues that we're dealing with in our district. But I wasn't gonna say anything tonight until item eight came up on the agenda tonight, and we had the gentleman from the Bureau of Reclamation speak to the council and to the city. And we all had our jaws drop when he's talking about bringing 2,000 or 3,000 more workers in 2020 to this area. We did a kind of a quick calculation, Assistant Superintendent, excuse me, Acting Superintendent Dean Bubar back there. Dean Bubar back there and myself, we're looking at maybe 2,000, 2,000-plus kids in addition to what we currently have. If we had those in three years, we have no place to put them. There are no facilities that, that we could expand with just portables, let alone pay for the portables to house those kids. So, what I really, I'm trying to say here is council needs to really keep in mind what's coming in the future. And if we have, I, I heard the lady speak earlier representing Mr. Rocha, the, he intends to come back to this city and build some more houses here. And if he continues to not want to pay the mitigation agreement fees, we have a problem. We have no way to fund schools. And what kind of quality of life is that going to bring to our community if we can't house the kids that are coming here? So, I would like, you know, to keep, the council to keep that in mind, that the potential impact from a decision really, could really affect everybody starting in 2020 for six years. So, it's kind of scary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Good evening. Rosie Repel, once again, on behalf of the developer. I do want to just, number one, thank staff. They did a great job in explaining and addressing these, these concerns. But just to reiterate that the applicant is not trying to circumvent the law. He's not trying to circumvent paying fees. He is more than willing to pay the fees that are required. He is more than willing to comply with the conditions of approval that are required, the mitigation measures that are required, and the school impacts have been considered during that environmental process. So, given that, he's not here to harm the city, harm the, the impact that it would have on children, but he's willing to abide by what the law requires. And again, the council must make the decision this evening based on what state law requires. State law says that you cannot consider school impact fees in consideration of the entitlements that are before you this evening. So, at this point, I would just like to thank you again for your consideration and the developer is here, you're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I just, I'm, I feel like, well, I guess I'm going to, my, my level of frustration maybe that I have with this project is, is that it's hard when we're being told by our legal counsel that we cannot deny this on, just based on the fact of that they're not paying the school fees. My level of frustration is, is that this went to the Planning Commission, it was delivered to the school district. I, I, and I want to work together and I think that we should be working together, but it's really hard to start working together once the ball's already rolling down the road. So, I look at this in my mind and I say, well, it went through Planning Commission, they talked about it, they say it's a good project. Then, when it finally comes to the council, now the school district, they send their letter and, and then, and I feel like it puts the city as the bad guy. We're in the no-win situation here. If we, if we decide to deny a project and, you know, I, I think that there may be an argument could be made just based on the zoning, if we didn't like to do the rezoning on it, maybe there's an argument to be made there. But if we deny it, then, then now the developer has the ability to come back after us for not following the rules and not following SB 50's rules. Then, you know, and then the school district, you know, maybe they have, they, they, we bring them back to the table with the school district, but the cities, we're, we're the bad guy because if we do approve the project and, you know, we're being part of not bringing enough money to, to build our schools. So, it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's tough. I just wish that, and I hope in the future, and I know that we have a new superintendent that's going to be starting shortly, and one of the things that I've asked our city manager is, is to make sure that we reach out and I hope that that new superintendent reaches out to all the council. And, and we need to be working on these issues and we need to kind of have a game plan. And I, and I, and I like the idea and I'm not saying that this is, I know we don't have an attorney here, but at least on the city's side up here, is, you know, we can strongly encourage developers to meet with the school districts and, and come up with plans so that we're not having this fight. You know, you work together and let's come up with something that can work. But at the end of the day, it's hard to do that when we're already this late in the process. So, I have Mrs. Lewis next.
Yes, thank you. This has gone through the Planning Commission and the process that our city requires. I, I know that the school district just went through a difficulty themselves in having to make a decision based on a particular law for what they had to do in regards to certain, you know, certain schools within the district that they had jurisdiction over. And we're kind of in the same position here tonight of making a decision based on the law and being fair, whether we like it or not, on, on a decision that's before us regarding land use. I, I think it's appropriate that, you know, as we move forward and hopefully, you know, as Councilman Severa said, with the new superintendent coming on board, that there's going to truly be some working with the community, with the City of Los Manos and the school district together to try to mitigate these things moving forward. The one thing that came to my mind is, is with the San Luis Dam up here, is that, you know, the federal government's looking at making some corrections up there and, you know, roughly maybe 2,000 people coming in. Whether they're going to contract some big company to come in and do it, I don't know what they're going to do. And naturally, those companies are going to have families and they're going to want to stay where they work. But the one thing about the federal government, they don't really care whether we have schools or not. They're just going to do what they're going to do. Now, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, they're being honest tonight by saying, yes, we'll work with the school district. But as I've seen things in the past, you know, when they make a decision about what they're going to do, they just move forward and do it regardless of the fallout. But that's a whole different story. And what we have facing here tonight is a project that's set before us. We have SB 50. And regardless of any kind of strong-arming that was done in past years when we were in high cotton and building a lot of homes with developers in the school district, if they agree to do that then, that's fine. But this is now and the law still stands. It stood then and it stands now. And we have to make a decision here tonight based on what the law is, not what our personal feelings are. And my personal feelings may be totally different than what the law is, but I still have to follow the law. So, from that, I think, you know, the audience pretty much understands where my position is on this. I don't particularly care for it, but it is what it is. And I'm hoping as we move forward with the new superintendent, as I stated, that we can quickly get together here in this city and work on these issues that we have as far as our schools are concerned, the impacts that we have. And, you know, if anything else, I'd like the school district to consider working on bond issues. We've built some really elaborate schools here in Los Manos that, in my opinion, I think it should have been more like what they've done at Mercy Springs, which is less cost-effective. And maybe we wouldn't be in this position about money. I don't know. But I, I certainly am not in the position of making a decision based on a school district's need as far as classrooms. I'd love to do that, but the law still stands before me and I have to make my decision tonight based on what California law is. And with that, you know, maybe there'll be some big thing that comes along since our governor has decided to start holding back money from our school districts, that school districts in California come together and start working with their legislators and put the, the hammer down on them to release that money and give it to them as, as the law has stated. So, we're, you know, we're just facing some really tough issues in California right now, but this law still stands. And until it changes and it eases up on cities and small municipalities and small school districts such as our community, we're kind of in a rock and a hard place. So, that's, that's all I have to say on that tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson Santos?
I feel as though my comments may echo a lot of what's going on here today and I feel as though it is a great project. It is going to beautify the area, which I personally feel is much needed in that area. And because of the hard decision we have today, I just feel like in the future, we definitely need to work more with this, with the school district and before it gets to this point as well. I also feel that, as, as Mrs. Lewis was saying, we are, the developer is meeting what they need, well, sorry, is, is meeting the, the law's requirements and the requirements that are needed here. I do have a concern though for the future projects like the dam and that we need to get up to date and be prepared for, for that when that does come to us. That is going to hit us hard, being so close to that. So, also, I would like to mention that Dennis Reyes did contact me. We did speak briefly on this subject and I personally feel that the project is, is very important and it is something that we need. But definitely, there's some, some definite, we need to work, the school district and us, we need to be on the same page as, just for the city as a whole in the future.
Mr. Faria?
Yeah, just a couple more reiterations, so to speak. I'm fully aware of the school situation. I'm a teacher. But schools, I, I accepted the SB 50 limitations when I took office and our city attorney was very clear about that. I've researched SB 50 intently. And whether I agree with the law or not, I follow it. My position has nothing to do with the schools on this issue. I want this to be the beginning of our doing on every time we do any new residential approval of any kind. This city needs a fiscal analysis to know, are we going to be able to provide police? We're going to be able to provide fire, sewer, water? Yes, we get these standard impact fees. But remember this, residential property is a drain on city funds. Commercial industrial property is the opposite. That's why we've been encouraging development of industrial and commercial property. And we've seen some great development of commercial property, been very successful. And our staff has been fantastic on that. And the Bay Area knows this. And I have friends who, I, I had a conversation once that just sent me reeling. This young man who worked in amongst the government and the corporate world there said, "I was in the meeting when they made the decision to do it, to build more commercial, to build more industrial, technically, property and not build enough housing." So, what it does is it forces the price of houses up, forces the poor out of your neighborhoods, and they're forced over the hill. The families coming to Los Manos, I've said before, they're not poor families, they're commuters. They're not poor families. They're people making a good living anywhere else except San Jose. And what happens is because, if I recall, it was about 25 years ago, maybe it's 30, yeah, maybe, San Joaquin County actually tried to sue Santa Clara County on this issue because, I grew up in Tracy, I was there. And I watched, that was where the first commuter boom began. And what happens is it, it flooded and overloads the system for the city. We don't have the resources. We don't even have enough resources, in my opinion. We're, I think, 1 to 1,000, is that correct, chief? So, 1, we're at about 1 police officer per 1,000 citizens. You know, Los Angeles runs 1 to 750, Manhattan runs 2, 1 to 225. Boy, I love those numbers. We used to be at about 1 to 750 until those drastic cuts. Now, we are not. And we don't have the resources to handle more housing. We're, you know, as I said, we annexed all this other land, it's been entitled, it's been approved, it's residential, you know, you can't change that. But it is within the city's purview to deny a zone change. It is within the city council's purview. We are the final authority. So, there's no law that says we have to approve this residential, this zone change. But as council, you know, as council goes, council will go. I have stated my opinion and then I know it'll take the vote, I imagine, pretty soon, then it'll go from there. But I just want to make it very clear how I stand on this.
Thank you. All right, are there any more comments?
As you were reading the agenda, you stated a different resolution number in your staff report than what's stated on the agenda.
Oh, I apologize. It needs to be what is on the agenda.
Um, I said...
Please follow the agenda.
I think it was a clerical error because on the last agenda.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't read any of the resolutions yet.
So, I don't know which resolution.
To follow what's on the agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Lucy. Okay, is there a motion? Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5857 as read by title.
And I, if you could read the title, I didn't read the title. I should have read them before, but I didn't. So, if you could read the title, please.
You want the whole thing read? Okay. I'll restate it, a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5857 approving mitigating negative declaration, SCH number 20170210033 and mitigation monitoring reporting plan for Sunset Hills Development located on the east side of Delaware Avenue between Pine Street and Madrone Streets, Madrone Street, more specifically identified as assessors parcel numbers 027-214-001 and 002-003-004-005-006 and -007.
There's a second, Ms. Johnson Santos?
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Lewis, a second by Mrs. Johnson Santos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Ms. Lewis?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor Protem, of a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5858 approving general plan amendment number 2016-02 to renegotiate properties identified as parcel numbers 027-214-001-002-003-004-005-006 and -007 from professional office, PO, to medium-density residential R2.
Ms. Johnson Santos?
I second that.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Lewis, a second by Ms. Johnson Santos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1154, amending the official zoning map by rezoning properties located on assessors' parcel number 027-214-001-002-003-004-005-006 and -007 from professional office, PO, to medium-density on assessors parcel number 027-214-001-002-003-004-005-006 and -007 from professional office to medium density residential R2.
Okay, there's a motion. I need a roll call on this one, Lucy. It's the next one. Okay, there are a motion on the floor by Ms. Lewis, a second, oh, Ms. Johnson-Santos, would you like to say?
I second that.
Second by Ms. Johnson-Santos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance Number 1154 as read by title.
And we, oh, second?
I second that.
And we will go, there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Lewis, a second by Ms. Johnson-Santos, and we'll go to Lucy for a roll call vote.
For Freya?
No.
Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Walton?
The motion passes. All right, and we will now invite the mayor and the city attorney back in.
Did you wake up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot.
My hair got a little longer.
Okay.
Are we on Item 11?
11.
Regarding Composition of the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG Board of Directors. And we'll go to Mr. Freya.
Sure. Well, what I'd like to do is reopen a 10-year-old conversation at both the staff and MCAG board levels. Back in 2007, well, MCAG was founded in 1967. Every 10 years, its charter comes up for renewal. In 2006, there was a great deal of discussion at MCAG Board to change the representational structure. Right now, MCAG has all five supervisors plus one representative from each city. It's mostly mayors from the cities, sometimes pro temps. And that structure was established back in Merced County in 1967, when the vast majority of the people who lived in the county, lived in the county. They were not in the urban areas. Los Banas had less than 10,000, Merced was about 20,000, Atwater was less, was, I think, about 10,000, Gustina dos Palos, about 2,500 apiece. And so, seems reasonable representation. Well, every 10 years has come up, they can change that in their charter if they choose. I was always under the impression that you had to wait that 10 years to make that change, and that's why I've waited till 2017 to bring it up. Recently, I've learned, we may have been able to change it sooner. MCAG, their bylaws say that they do have the authority to change those structures if they so desire. And for other reasons, what I wanna do is I wanna reexamine this, because it got, it almost got passed. I want one of the details of the drama, but there was some. And it was, the cities were pretty much under the impression, from what I learned, I didn't know this at the time, I learned it years later, that they were gonna go to a seven-member board, one representative from the county, and then one each from each of the cities. Well, the 2006 election changed our mayor. And that mayor and that city manager chose to go the other way. And I have, I have the minutes, I didn't bring them with me, but the way it went was the TRB, what a TRB is a Technical Review Board, that's the city manager, all the CEOs from city and county. The TRB meets to discuss the issues, and they take votes. When the TRB met on this item, their vote was four to three, in favor of the seven-member board. The three were Merced City, Merced County, and to the surprise of some of the, of many of the MCAG members, Los Banas. It came to MCAG Board in May. Both potential were on there, to keep their 11 structure or to go to the seven. There was discussion, and the item was continued to the June meeting. At the June meeting, the seven-seat structure was no longer on the table, because it was obvious we're Los Banas mayor. Los Banas' mayor at that time did not bring that information to City Council. It was never brought to me, and I don't know of any other city council member who was told about it when we got elected. So this went on quite quietly, so quietly, in fact, that it was on our consent agenda in July of 2007, in our city council meeting, July 18. And it went through a consent agenda. I was a rookie council member, a lot I didn't know. And it was, well, it's just the routine of going through the renewal of MCAG charter. Okay, on we go. I had, I learned later about the drama that had taken place and the situation that had taken place. So, recently, I did some research to look at other COGS, and what a COG is, is a council of governments. MCAG is what a COG, and that's the acronym we use. And you have to have a council of governments in a county or a group of counties, like the Bay Area is all one COG, in order to get state and federal highway funds. And so that's what, in order for special projects. We use our COG for highway funds, to leverage highway funds, and we use them also, and they also help us procure, they handle our garbage, solid waste. And so, I said, well, let's see what the other counties look like. Well, our neighbor Stanislaw County has 16 seats, 11, one from each city. Actually, I think two, or two of those are from Modesto, I think. And they have, but they have all five supervisors on their board. San Joaquin County has only two supervisors on their board, out of the total of 12. San Joaquin County also has three ex officio, they're non-voting members, but they're there. Sometimes transportation directors are on those boards. Fresno County has 16 on their seat, only one supervisor. Madera County is kinda unique. There are only two towns, only two incorporated cities in Madera. So what they have is they have three supervisors, two Madera City representatives, and one from Chowchilla. Kern County has 11 city representatives, all five supervisors, but they have 11 cities, and so they have 11 city representatives. San Luis Obispo County has only one supervisor with seven city representatives. San Benito County, which is part of the Bay Area ABAG, but for their transportation authority, they have five members in the area, and they include, of those five, two supervisors. Tulare County has one supervisor, eight city representatives. Riverside County, going down, check the inland empire down there, the 18 cities, that's big, all five superintendents. They also have the municipal water district representative, and then they have 18 cities. And they also, in Riverside County, have an ex officio member from the school district, which I think is a cool idea. Santa Clara County, I think it's just for their transportation, because they're part of ABAG. ABAG is the Association of Bay Area Counties, and they, they're like a giant vacuum cleaner for federal and state highway funds, because they're so big. And if you know anything about the laws of gravity, the gravity of a body increases exponentially with its size, and its gravity for money does the same, as does Los Angeles and Southern California. Santa Clara County, their transportation, one superintendent out of their 15 cities. So, it looks like we're, you know, Madera County, which is very different from us, it doesn't have that very long span, it's a small county, it doesn't span two major areas. They're half and half. Merced County is almost half and half, just, it's six and five. And that's, it's very unusual in the picture. And it's been the same since 67. But things have changed a lot since 67. Los Banas in 67 only had one-tenth of the county's population, maybe a little less. The county had 100,000, and we were running at about 7,000. And I think we got up to 10,000 in 1970, thanks to the dam. And it looks like it's all gonna, we're gonna have a deja vu here in a few years with the dam reconstruction. So, now, though, we're, with our 40,000 out of the 250,000 in the county, we make up about a sixth. But we still have just that one representative on the board over there, and the five supervisors are still the five supervisors. Now, I don't know where that conversation is going, where it will go. I would, and I will let people know, too, our mayor, as a board member of MCAG, he doesn't need council authority to bring this up there. He could bring it up if he chose to. Any representative from the city of Los Banas, anybody sitting in that director's seat has the authority to bring it up at a meeting, or request it to be discussed, and through staff and through the chair, get it on our agenda. But what I'm looking for is to see how this council feels about having our staff, and in this case, our staff, our city manager is part of the TRB, and our representative, be the mayor or anyone going in his stead, to reopen this old conversation, to reexamine it. Now, does it need to be as austere as, you know, seven with one for the county? I don't know. That's a discussion to be had. You know, there are a lot of unincorporated towns in the county that don't have a seat at MCAG, because if you're not an incorporated city, you don't get a seat at the table. So, you know, looking at those numbers, reexamining those numbers and that structure, I think it'd be good, especially now, as Measure V funds become available, and that voting board determines how they get leveraged. Because the big thing in Measure V is the leveraging of that money. The money that comes directly from the taxes is small potatoes. It's the power of leveraging, where you can leverage 90% of a project that that money gets used. And we wanna make sure we're strongly represented there, that our 40,000, soon to be 50,000, I'm sure, at the rate we're growing, gets represented properly, and that the needs are met. But, and, you know, Highway 152, the issues there, you bypass it, you try to solve it another way. Highway 165, it's in some parts of that highway, or a death trap, those are issues that MCAG deals with. Highway 59, serious problems, those are the arteries in and out of Los Banas. And I'd like to see if our council would like to authorize our staff and our elected officials to open that conversation at MCAG.
Thank you. Mr. Silveira, you have a comment?
Yes, I do, and I, through you, mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Freya, what is your desired outcome? What is, if, and I get it, because obviously, we would have to go down this road to see, but what is your desired outcome of it? Do you wanna see it go to a six and one? Is that what your desired outcome is?
I would like to see it examined, and I'd like to see Los Banas represented a little more than just, than just 9%,
Yeah, I guess, I, I understand, and I, this is, we've talked about this for years. I do think when you look at the numbers on there, just the way that our, I would have no problem with the five and the six, you know, five reps from the county and six from the cities, if our county was broken up in a different way. But with the west side being the largest, by landmass, the largest county, or the largest district, and our division, you know, our cutoff point is basically the San Joaquin River. And so, when you look at that, the way that the numbers stack out, the, if we were playing that game of east side versus west side, east side, west side will lose every time. I don't think that happens all the time, but I can just tell you, for me, if we were looking to go do something with a one person from the county rep, I don't think that's fair. I, that's my opinion. I don't think it's fair. I think that at minimum, that I would say, is the county would need to have three reps on there, and in my opinion, having it to where there's an east side and a west side, guaranteed east side and a west side rep, because you do have the unincorporated areas of Delhi, then you get, you know, further out, and you got Planata, La Grande, and those areas, and Hillmar, Hillmar being a big one, and those areas where they need that, they need to have that representation there, because you go to one supervisor, and let's say that it's, it's the west side supervisor's the one on there. You don't, they're not intimately familiar with those other areas. And so, I, that's why I was curious, is what you wanted to go to, because I've heard the number of going to just seven, and I just instantly think to myself that we're gonna go from one extreme to the other. We feel like the cities aren't being represented now, then if you go to a six and a one, now the county's not being represented properly. So, that was just a quick question for you.
Through the mayor, if I may, and this is the conversation I'd like to see take place there, because I do, you know, we do have a lot of unincorporated towns. And I'd like to see, also, I'd like to see these ideas here with transportation representatives, school representatives. I think that's very forward-thinking, and I think that's very good. The general public doesn't understand how much power MCAG wields. They control all your major state and federal highway funds. So, it is a very important board, and I think this discussion, if we could get it started, and then, I think would be good for the whole county to discuss it once again, and discuss it openly. And this time, council's knowing about this idea. And once again, it is a reopening of a 10-year-old conversation that I thought was handled and ended poorly by not letting the council know all that was going on. And it was, when someone approached me about it from MCAG, and I looked, and my jaw dropped, I said, "What do you mean? What happened?" When they explained the story, then I said, "Wow, this was handled poorly." And I think council, I'm an open government person, I want conversations, because great conversation leads to great government. It's symbiotic. And it's like here, in this council now. I mean, we have this really great relationship with staff, our citizens, our citizens come to us. We talk to them, we have to talk to staff, staff talks to us. Everybody's talking, and everything's getting better. There's less conflict, there's less, there's less angst, because when problems come to us, we're all, all hands on deck, let's see what we can do. That's what I think I'd like to see happen with MCAG. So, yeah, I think one might be a little austere, but different versions and different, different styles and different layouts, I think would be cool, I think it'd be a good idea. If you look at the supervisor districts, there are three that are, well, Merced, Atwater, and then, but then you've got, one of them sweeps all the way across the north of the county, has Gustine, Hillmar, and Snelling. And then, our district is Los Banas and Dos Palos and all the rural area in this area. So, it's the concentration, if you just looked at it, west side, east side, you'd have three cities, one supervisor, one and a half supervisors. So you've got four and a half out of a body of 11. You're gonna lose every time. But once again, this is the conversation I'd like to see happen. So I wanna see how council feels about it, if we can get a general direction, take a vote tonight to go that way, or to give staff a direction to work up a plan on how we wanna proceed. What is the will of the council, and ideas from the staff?
The, please clarify, I wasn't the mayor when all this took place.
No, you weren't.
Junior council members.
Yeah.
And I think what the council, the voting body, has to, has to ask themselves this question, does the current voting structure, as defined in the bylaws, give all the entities fair representation when they vote? I think that's the question you have to ask yourselves tonight. Are we fairly represented? Is Gustine fairly represented? Is Dos Palos fairly represented? And if you get right down to it, we don't have a supervisor all to ourselves. And neither does Gustine, because they represent the east and the west side. So the supervisors can't say, "I'm a west side person," because then they're not doing their job for the east side. So, so the way it's laid out, we don't have a supervisor to ourselves. The west side does not have one, in solely representing the west side. What you're referring to, Mr. Freya, is the bylaws. The bylaws govern MCAG. Now, do all five council members here know what's in those bylaws? I don't think so. I have I haven't, I can probably tell you 90% of it, because I've read it over so many times, but not all of us know what's in there. My, part of my suggestion would be, is that we have either Bill or the city manager give us an overview of the bylaws, to know exactly what MCAG is, you said, what they're responsible for. And to me, that would be the first step. So, all five council members understand what's at stake here. Then, we come back for phase two, and we talk about, well, what are some of the things that we'd like to see, based on the bylaws? And that way, we all have a five-person understanding of what's happening here. That, to me, would be the first step, that all of us are on the same page, if we're gonna do this. Do I feel that it's fair? You know, I've been on there for many years, and the proof is in the projects that have been awarded to the east side and the west side. To date, over a half a billion dollars to the east side and zero on the west side. The bypass has been a project since 1962. That's been the number-one project in the county. Now, what happens is all these other projects move ahead of us. And that kind of bothers me, because we don't have the votes, we don't have the horsepower. And now, the Measure V money, the Measure V money is pittance. It's nothing. In the scope of government, it's absolutely nothing. What is the big prize, the eye on the prize? Are the funds that you get from state and federal for roads? Because that's the only way you're gonna complete these projects. And none of those funds have been allocated towards any of our projects. So, we have to discuss, you know, what we'd like to see for Los Banas, what's bringing our plan? What is our, but first thing, we have to talk about those bylaws, so everyone understands what MCAG is about. Then we can all be on a level playing field to give me, I feel, to give me direction on which way we should go. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I've always felt about MCAG is that, and it's already been stated, is that we've had unfair advantage. The thing that sticks out in my mind most recently is that they come to us and tell us that the bypass is number one. But we all know that last year, the state of California, due to the reduction of state gasoline taxes, reevaluated what projects they were gonna put on hiatus and which projects they were gonna go forward on. And the bypass was one of them that was put on hiatus until 2030. So, in my mind, I had to ask myself, if the state says that this project is not worth the money at this particular time, how is MCAG gonna make it a priority? How are they going to take monies that taxpayers give them to make this an important project, despite the fact that it's been out there since 1964? But with that, you know, the representation level on the board, five supervisors, I think is a little bit much. I know that the supervisors represent unincorporated areas, but they should all pretty much be on the same page, as well as knowing what their districts need. And that's where the unfair voting advantage, to me, has been Achilles' heel for me, is the mere fact that nothing ever gets voted for the Los Bano side, regardless of what supervisor sits up there. We just don't get it. So, if, you know, if in fact, the bylaws indicate that, you know, there is this possibility to restructure the board and make it more equitable for each city and still represent the county, I don't have issue with that, but I have issue with the way it sits right now. But my bigger question is, we kind of know what we need, as far as representation is concerned. I think the bigger thing is that we need to come up with a project for MCAG to start looking at and working on, because they're not gonna look at the bypass. We already know that. They've spent, what, 10-plus million dollars on some environmental study, and that's money wasted down the drain. So, if we, I don't know if we need staff direction to do this, to say, "Look, just present our position that we want to look at this bylaw and reevaluate it, and then move forward with our project." I don't know whether or not that's something that we need staff time to do. Maybe we do. I don't know. I'm just, you know, I need clarification on that, because this seems like something that we should just say, you know, as a group of council people here, that we have concerns about representation, and we want more equity on the west side, as far as moving our projects forward. And how, you know, we feel that the board is unequally balanced, as far as the number of people representing the county versus the number of cities that are there. And even if it changes, you know, I would hope that the likelihood that there would be a better working organization, where they are fairly looking at what is needed throughout the county, and not just what's needed on the east side to build up the east side, because UC Merced is there, because they've got projects with the Castle, Old Castle, Air Force Base, and we get totally neglected. We need money to do projects over here. We need money to build up our infrastructure, our roads, and our economy on the west side. So, I guess, the bigger picture is, yes, I real, you know, I feel personally that the board needs to be restructured, as far as the number is concerned. The number, I can't say what it should be, but I'm not really sure whether or not we, as a council, just can't say, "Look, we agree that this needs to happen, and we're agreeing together to ask our mayor to represent us and say, 'Move forward,' and bring this bylaw forward, and let's discuss it and see how we can change it."
I would hope that I can do that on my own, but I don't want that. I'm listening to the discussion. I don't want to do that. What I want to do is, I want council support.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we agree to support you, I don't know that we need staff time to do that.
But it's important that all of us be on a level playing field with these bylaws, because I don't think anyone, one of us knows in entirety the MCAG bylaws. And it will, in those bylaws, it's gonna have a severe impact on probably how you think, and what MCAG is in charge of, and how they distribute the funds. All those are outlined in the bylaws, and it's, if you don't want to go through them, that's fine, just give me direction. But this would give the public a chance to hear what's in those bylaws also, to discuss it. Okay? We have to talk about, and then a project is the second part of it. But after we determine that the voting structure is not adequate, then, based on all that we've learned, then we can go forward, and I will put that on the MCAG agenda, if that's the council wish. But we need to know, I mean, it's important to know what I've learned over the last 10 years that can be communicated. And I think between Alex and the city manager, and Stacy and I, we can do a great job of outlining these bylaws and what it is. But I think all of us have to remember, Merced County Association of Governments. Association of Governments. Right now, the association is not there for the west side.
I realize that. I realize that.
So, I don't want to belabor this anymore. So, we all have our points. I'm gonna go, Mr. Silveira, I'm gonna give Veronica a chance to talk, and I'll come back to you.
Well, I just wanted to say that if it's been such a long time since they've actually looked at the structure of this, and it's said to me perfectly that if they need to look into themselves and just kind of look over, and just kind of see if they're actually representing everybody correctly, and like you said about the bypass, if it's been on there since 1967 and they're not doing anything about it, then I'd say, yes, we probably need to go in there and see how, if they're even looking at our side as potential. And, I mean, like, and like has been said several times, we need to have some type of project. We can't go to them and say, "Fix it," and there's nothing for them to fix. So, I say, yes, we need to look into it, but like you said, I don't know a whole lot about the bylaws, so that's my failing there, but...
You're okay with that?
I would be okay to look into that, but...
Okay. Okay, and in the process, you know, I could get the list of the projects that have been completed on the east side, some other things, because I have that information, and then all of us could kind of put in our two cents to give a presentation that would work. Mr. Silveira?
Just a couple comments. The first thing is, I, for, I don't want this to come across as we're just sitting here bashing on MCAG. I think that the city of Los Banas has some fault in why we didn't get any of that funding, is because, long before I got here, that bypass was the number-one priority project, and we've made it pretty simple. When you had the 400, and maybe when it started, it was 200, but the price of it keeps going up. And now, it's the $400 million elephant in the room, when the monies were never there. We should, Ms. Lewis hit the nail on the head, we should have been talking about other projects and not putting all our eggs in the bypass basket, because to me, that's what we did for too many years. Number-one priority project at MCAG is the Los Bano's bypass. Oh, yeah, by the way, it costs $400 million. Yeah, you break it into phases, there's still 100-plus million dollars a phase. So, this is my feeling on the bypass. We don't got the money, folks. We're not gonna get it done. I don't even want to talk about it no more. We just need to take it off the list. Until the state of California is willing to put some real money into the game, Measure V, all of our money, it's irrelevant. It's not gonna get there. I'm done talking about the bypass. I wanted this group to send a message out to get it from our constituents, whether they wanted to do it or not. We didn't do that. Bypass is dead to me. I think we need the bypass. It kills me every Friday night, especially when I drive through Los Bano's. I hate the traffic. I don't know how those people in Southern California do it. I really don't know how they do it, because I can't even stand it for the whole 15 minutes. I'm caught up in it here. But irregardless, bypass is done. We need new projects. We need to start thinking, because we do have Measure V money. We do have the ability to leverage that money. We need to come up with new projects here. So, that's first one. And then the second thing I have is, is where do we think this is gonna go? We have our opinion here, but are we, do we have a good, at least hopefully, a good idea that there's other folks out there that maybe have the same opinion as us and want to change this structure? Because I can see a way where, Los Bano's, we're all agreeing here that, hey, we think we need to try to change the organization here, but then, we don't get enough support on it, and then guess what? Now, we're just the little whiny ones on the west side, and maybe it creates even more animosity. I just want, if we're gonna have this discussion, let's have nuts to bolts, one end to the other, and let's lay everything out there on the table, and let's try to put our best foot forward to make it better for the west side, and more importantly, Los Bano's.
And then those bylaws.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm gonna go to our city manager, and then to you.
Just a process and agenda clarification. The item and the request was for the board structure and not necessarily the bypass, so I just want to focus the discussion...
That's not...
On the board structure and not stray too far.
The bylaws.
Correct.
The bylaws and, yes.
If I may, and not stray from that over to discussion on the bylaws.
That's a different discussion.
Correct.
Yes. Bylaws right now only.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna go to, oh, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes. No, Alex, I think the bypass was just a frustration that some of us brought out, because it's been there so long, and MCAG has come to us saying that was number one, but it really wasn't. It's just a frustration call. And, you know, I'm hearing a little bit more clearly the request and looking at the bylaws. So, if the intent of the request is to have staff give us a summary of the bylaws, how it's supposed to work for the county as a whole and all the cities within it, and, you know, the discussion of maybe how it hasn't been working for the city of Los Bano's will probably be left up to us. I don't know if, you know, our city attorney is going to be making any points about how the bylaws, as they're constructed, have not worked for Los Bano's. I'll leave that up to staff to make those kinds of decisions. But if it's gonna help our community understand better, as well as this council, because certainly I wasn't on the council when all this was done, I have no idea all the ins and outs of the things that were going on when you and Mr. Freya first came on council. But it is important that we all understand clearly what we're facing in regards to an organization as important as MCAG, and how the monies that are collected, be it Measure M or V, was it M?
V.
Measure V. And as you said, it is pittance compared to what can come down from the federal government and the state government. But with that, more importantly, I want it, I just, this is a cry outside of the bylaws, that things need to be fair for Los Bano's.
Thank you. I will tell you, Mr. Freya, you can correct me, we were allocated money three times for the bypass to buy the property, and then the money was pulled back. So, the only way Los Bano's is at fault is that, well, at that time, at that time, coming up with another project wasn't an option, because everyone, according to MCAG, was pushing for the bypass, because that was the project. And coming up with other projects at that time would have nullified, and they would have said that the bypass wasn't important. And that's what people tried to portray, that, see, you don't want the bypass, you want, if we were to come up with another project. And sadly enough, that was used to say that the bypass is number one, but we're never gonna build it, because it's so expensive. And that's the point I will make, because the price kept going up and up and up. So, Mr. Freya?
So, I'd like to tie this together, if I may, and that is to give direction to staff, city attorney, city manager, to bring back the analysis of the bylaws. Let us know with that analysis what we can do, what can be done at this time regarding the representational structure of MCAG. Then, we, as a council, take that information here in a council meeting, and we have another discussion about what we want to do. And I think that would be a great plan of action. So, if anyone wants to second that motion, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Well, I'll second that. I'll second that. And then, you can give me direction from there.
Based on our decision.
Yeah.
Based on our decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Call for a vote?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried.
Thank you very much. Just a quick closure, know that we don't want any animosity with our friends across the valley and across the county. We are family. We're all in Merced County together. Merced County gets the short end of the stick on a lot of things, and I'm tired of it. And if we work together, just like any family, there's gonna be disagreements, and there's gonna be discussions. But a family nonetheless, and a family that sticks together to benefit the whole family. And you have to make sure everybody knows what's necessary and what's needed, and that's what I think this is time for this. No animosity, no anger, no opposition of any kind to our colleagues at MCAG. Many of them are very, they're very good friends and very able and capable colleagues, and looking forward to working with them on this new idea.
Sure. You're just looking for fair representation.
Exactly.
That's it. And the first step tonight was a 5-0 vote, so thank you, council.
Thank you.
When do you think, Alex, to bring this back?
We had estimated July 19th, but based on the change in the direction, let us, you know, shoot for July 19th, but depending on how deep that analysis goes, we may take a little longer.
Okay. It's pretty self-explanatory, but you guys do. Okay, are we all right? July 19?
July 19.
We'll shoot for that.
We'll shoot for that.
Okay. Council, you okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Very good discussion. Okay. Let's go on to item 12. See, the city attorney predicted we're going to leave at 12 o'clock tonight. I say no. Okay? Advisory to public notices, one report. Stacy?
For public hearing, we have an amendment by, it's a request by Circle K for their site plan review conditions of approval. There's one condition, condition number 28, that they're requesting an amendment, and this is regarding the hours of operation for their automatic car wash. They have provided a request for reconsideration. This would be a recommendation from the planning commission up to the city council. This would be held on June 14th, public hearing at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Any questions of Community and Economic Development Director Elms?
That's the one on Mercy Springs.
Yes, it is.
Stated for the record.
The one on Mercy Springs is the one that we're speaking of, correct?
Yes, it is. 410 North Mercy Springs Road.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to city manager's report. Alex?
We had a great Farm de Plaza event last night. Thank you to the chamber for their hard work in putting that together. I will add that I was promoted to roadie, and roadie roles and responsibilities for Tom and the Tomcats. I'll look forward to, to my next gig, whenever that is.
Is it a compensated role?
I don't believe so. I don't think-
Wait a minute, we've got to get this for the record.
I don't believe so. I don't think I need to report that on my Form 7.
Oh, okay. All right.
We pay in here.
All right. Okay. All right. Let's go to item 14. City council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank Save Mart for their grand, they called it the grand reopening of a new facility. It's such a beautiful store, and I was really proud to see such a new, beautiful structure come to our, our city. I think they're going to do well, and just looking forward to shopping there. It was a pleasure being in a grand opening. We also celebrated in our community at the National Cemetery, the Memorial Day service, and the theme was salute to our military and fallen heroes. It was a wonderful ceremony out there. I'd like to encourage the community to please come out and support that particular memorial ceremony, and bring your children, so that they can understand what fellow Americans have done to allow them to continue to have freedoms in this country and gave their lives for that. There was also a ceremony at the Los Banos Cemetery on the actual Memorial Day, which was Monday. And I'd like to just, a compliment on the backs of our city manager about our successful Farm de Plaza farmers market. The fresh vegetables out there were really, really nice, and there are more to come. So, I'm really looking forward to this. It was a really nice community event, along with the music, and there were quite a few people out there for the first time. So, I know this event is going to grow. It's, it's under a different structure than our previous one, and I'm, I'm very confident that it's going to be a successful venture with our chamber. I just kind of like to go back a little bit in regards to the project that we heard tonight, which was item 10 on our agenda. One of the things that I would like to see us begin to do is, as projects are going to be annexed or zone-changing in our city, we really do need to look at an analysis for how it's going to affect our police and fire, our public works department, the whole city as a whole. There, one of the things that I've always been in favor of when projects come to us for consideration of approval are not just the pros, but the cons. You know, are there negative things that can affect us, so that the council can have a overall view of whether or not they want to consider a project being worthwhile coming into Los Banos. And I think that was something I learned years ago from going to planning conferences, is that, you know, the, the facilitators there would always recommend that staff give the pros and cons of a project coming forward. And I think we, we've done a wonderful job, but now I think we're getting ready to move into a, another, like, jet phase of residents moving to Los Banos, not just with this one small project, but we have way bigger projects out there that are coming. Those developers already negotiated with the school district years ago on the impact fees that they were going to get. So, you know, we can't, as a city council, force anybody to talk to anybody in regards to a project that has a direct effect over the school district or, or any other organization. But I do think that it's time for us, because our city is becoming a little more of a metropolitan, that we get, begin to work more closely with our school district and any other organizations that may affect the growth of our city, and what direction we're going, and how we're going to get there. Because the quality of life is important for everyone who lives in this city, whether it's the school district, whether it's our police and fire, all the residents. The quality of life, for me, is probably my biggest standard as far as the city of Los Banos is concerned. So, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor, and that's it.
You're welcome. Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I don't have, just a couple of things I wanted to say is, I wanted to congratulate my daughter. She won't, soon won't see this. She's at the Merced Fair right now, but she won, she won 4H Advanced Showmanship, and she's going into round robin on, she won it here at May Day, and then she won it at Merced Fair again. So, she's going into round robin on Friday, so we're pretty excited about that. The next thing is, is we got an email and came out, and I know it's going to be a while, Chief, but I announced your retirement, and I just tell you already that I know you've still got a while before you go, but I really am going to be sad to see you go. So, but it gives us some time to talk about some stuff, and, and I'm glad you're just not leaving tomorrow. We got, we got some time to work through some things. So, congratulations on your retirement. I know you've got grandchildren that you're going to get to go spend some more time with, so I know you're looking forward to that. But I want to be at least, for now, one of the first council members to thank you for, for all your years of service. So, thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
We'll get our chance at him later. Hey, let's go on to Mr. Fariah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Tim. Well-deserved, well-earned. We'll talk more later, have some celebrations and some, some sadness. We'll definitely miss you from here. Memorial Day service, I was there, the local one, and it was a beautiful service, was a beautiful morning. We had the Elks, you have American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, and all dignitaries there, and so honored the dead died in service and who have served. We thank people for coming. Also, remember yesterday was D-Day, the largest land invasion in history. It was the beginning of the end for Hitler, and it didn't come cheap. Now, next, I want to congratulate Chamber of Commerce. I got the joy of living with my wife while she organized that, and that's why she's not here tonight. She's exhausted. It was a tremendous success for a first, particularly for a first round. I'll let you know that the farmers, they're going to move their vegetables to the other side of the plaza, so the sun doesn't beat on them. They're used to working in the Bay Area, where they don't have that valley sun, so the lettuce shouldn't wilt. Vanessa Lovato in the Los Manos Music Academy is going to bring music entertainment next week. I play gig, I play occasionally when they need me, but those of you interested in doing performance there, I, I'm the one coordinating that. So, you can reach me through my phone, 209-675-1675, or send me an email through the city. Or you can leave a message with Bertha at the chamber. So, congratulations. It was very nice. And thank Ron Bertell came out and played for us. He plays for us just out of the goodness of his heart for these public functions. Great drummer. Coming up tomorrow, Flag Day service here. The Elks put it on. If you've never come, it's one of the most educational things. Super, super educational. It's next week, next week, June 14th, starts at 6:00. And that's the real Flag Day. It's always on the Wednesday around Flag Day. Starts at 6:00. Come on in a quarter till, so you can get yourself a seat. And then, this Saturday and Sunday, Sunday is the big festa, DES Festa, the Divine Holy Spirit celebration. You'll have the, Saturday, though, I think the Bud Late is Saturday. And the Folclorico, they have some music going on. They'll have a dance Saturday night, dance Sunday night. Soposh, the famous Portuguese roast beef with, with the soggy bread, as my friend puts it. And it's a lot of fun. We hope you can come out. Los Banos just keeps getting better and better with lots of people working very, very hard, and we thank you very much.
Okay. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos. Was it on?
No.
Let's try it again.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. I'd first like to apologize for my last, the last meeting's absence. I unfortunately was sick. I was also at the Memorial Day service. It was, it was very nice, my first one. It was very nice to go to. Save Mart is, is beautiful. I thought it was very aesthetically pleasing, and I fortunately wasn't there for the opening, but I came shortly after, and I thought it was very nice. Congrats, Chief. I didn't know about that, so I do apologize. And also, outside of Save Mart on the weekends, BFW and American Legion will be selling tickets for Veterans Day Parade proceeds. So, that is it. I'm short, sweet.
Okay. Thank you. I already mentioned about Las Vegas and, and why the three of us were there. Again, thanks, staff. Had a, had a really good time, and it's a lot of walking, and I think we accomplished a lot of good for the, for the city of Los Banos. And now, with this announcement of maybe 2,000 more people coming here, I think that's something that we can promote into maybe more retail. So, the farmers market, I want everyone to remember that, that everyone has great ideas. And in order to accomplish those ideas, you have to partner with people. And in this case, the, the Chamber of Commerce partnered with the city. And it takes, takes many people to put this on, and then the Chamber of Commerce then secured Shaskey Farms, and now independent vendors are coming. It's going to go on every week. It, it is a lot of work. And, and thank you to the, the chamber members, Bertha, for what you've done, put it together. It was a successful event. And Chief, thank you for the officer that was roaming around, too. So, Tim Marison was there with his family, and saw a number of city people there that decided to come and, and, and enjoy. If you want fresh fruit, and then a lot of, got a lot of stuff with a lot of calories. It's really good. A lot of, you know, different flavored walnuts and, and almonds, and, and just a number of things. So, if you'd like to come down, it's going to be every Tuesday, right? From now until September, is that correct?
Yes.
And it will start at 4:30 till?
9:00.
9:00 PM?
So, the commuters can make it out.
Here, say that again?
Running it till 9:00, so that our commuters can make it out there, get home in time to, to, to come out.
So, so please come out, and maybe we'll get some press out of the enterprise, and, because I know they were there, and, and we'll see. Don't laugh. Well, maybe he'll look at the tape. So, so great, good farmers market. It, absolutely wonderful. And then Memorial Day. I attended both ceremonies, one out at the National Cemetery, and then the local one. We presented a picture to the National Cemetery, which will be hung proudly, the same picture that's hanging out in our, in our foyer here. And we have to remember, we can't forget the 15 from Los Banos who died in service to our country. They gave their lives, and these were all young men at the time. They would range anywhere from, from 67 to 70 to 100 years old. And their life was cut short in their early twenties, and sometimes in their teens. So, please look at that picture and remind yourselves that 15 men from Los Banos lost their lives in service to our country. Both ceremonies were very fitting, very, very dignified, and, and those who attended, thank you for attending and remembering not only our war dead, but, but, but all who gave their life in service to their country. So with that, we are now, wait a minute, Mr. Attorney, you may be right. It may be midnight, but not for the audience. Okay. We're going to go into closed session now, unless anyone else has anything else they'd like to add. And conference of real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property located at 1111 G Street, Los Manos, California, APN 026161003, 026161008. Portion, approximately 6.4 acres. City negotiators, city manager, Trazza, city attorney, Vaughn, finance director, Williams, police chief, Breezy. Negotiating parties, Sam Watson, under negotiation, purchase price and terms of sale. And item B, public employee annual performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. Title, city manager. Oh, I forgot one other thing, and if there's anything to report, we'll come back out, if you'd like to wait, and we'll, we'll report out to you. The last thing I want to mention, I, I was going to say this, is that, you know, as, as Mrs. Lewis said, the school district has their attorneys. We have our attorneys. Now, will two attorneys agree? Nah. But in this case, they don't agree. So, I don't know any way out of this. We pay good money for representation, and if we don't listen to that representation, we're at fault as a city council. We are greatly at fault, because we pay for that information, and we pay a number of people to keep us out of problems, and they do a great job. Now, those opinions, I'm not going to say conservative, but they are the opinion based on the law. And I was listening to Mr. Silveira, and he says, you know, you may not like it, but that's the law. And Mrs. Lewis said the same thing. You know, so, there's only one way out of this, and I doubt it could ever happen. The only way out of this is that the school district hires an attorney, and the school district holds us harmless for any actions if we make the wrong decision. And I know that's not going to happen, because, because, because they can come in and they can say anything that they want. And they have the right to say whatever they want. This is America. But, but we have our opinion, and we need to go with that. We have our legal opinion, and we need to go with it. Now, if the school district was absorbing all the costs on both sides, and if the wrong decision was made, they would hold the city harmless, and they would pay all damages to anyone who sues. That's the only way to resolve this. So, we try and make the best decision at this dais, and not based on any emotion, but based on fact and based on the law. So, it's not that we don't want to work with the school system. We've worked with them, and I was a little upset when the attorney said they used to work with us in the past. Well, that's not true. We've always worked with the school district, and we've had two-by-three meetings, and that, that, that remark kind of highly upset me. And, and I'm, I'm stating for the record right now, we do what's right, and we do it within the law. So if we have anything to report for closed session, we'll report out.